Madam Mayor, recording has begun.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. I would like to officially call this meeting to order. Director Pitts, could you please do a roll call?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Mayor James?
Here.
Councilman Goldsmith?
Here.
Councilman Trolinger?
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Present.
Councilman Jenkins?
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. If you all would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, if you have had a little peek at our meeting agenda today, if it is presentable, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we accept the April 25, 2023 meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the approval of the April 18 minutes. If you all have had an opportunity to look at it, I will entertain a motion to accept it as presented.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the April 18, 2023 meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This brings us to our proclamations. This month, we do have two proclamations. We have National Stroke Awareness Month and Mental Health Awareness Month. So I will read a little bit about National Stroke Awareness Month, and then I will have Councilwoman Bryant Ward read the proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. So, whereas stroke is consistently the fifth leading cause of death in the United States, the third leading cause of death in the state of Maryland, and the fifth leading cause of death in Charles County, and whereas there are life-saving treatments that must be administered within three to four and a half hours once symptoms begin, only a very small percentage of patients get to the hospital within the treatment window due to the public's inability to recognize the onset of stroke-like symptoms or the importance of calling 911 immediately. And whereas to help educate the community about the signs of stroke, the town of LaPlata will serve as a model for other communities, cities, counties, and states, as well as the nation, by posting stroke education in the area of stroke awareness, prevention, and recognition in all its government buildings and on its town website. The town will further allow stroke educational opportunities during public events whenever feasible to increase the public's awareness of how to spot a stroke, stop a stroke, and save a life. Whereas, the goal is to educate everyone in the town of LaPlata about stroke recognition and the importance of dialing 911 immediately. Businesses, civic organizations, senior communities, faith-based organizations, and residents will be encouraged to participate and contribute to the Stroke Smart: Spot a Stroke, Stop a Stroke, Save a Life campaign through active citizenship efforts. Now, therefore, we, the council of the town of LaPlata, do recognize the month of May, 2023, as National Stroke Awareness Month, and encourage all of our citizens to make every effort to learn how to spot a stroke, stop a stroke, and save a life. And it is signed by our council, myself, Mayor Janine James, Councilman Goldsmith, Councilwoman Trolinger, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, and Councilman Jenkins. And I must say that we are proud to be Maryland's first Stroke Smart City, and we are making every effort to educate our community on how to recognize a stroke. So we will have a presentation in just a bit to kind of put this all together. So that, just know, next month, in just a couple days, it is National Stroke Awareness Month. With that, moving on to Councilwoman Bryant Ward, where she will read a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor James. The town of LaPlata proclamation, Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2023. Whereas, mental health is important for our individual well-being and vitality, as well as that of our families, communities, and businesses. And whereas, one in five Americans experience a mental health illness that requires treatment at some point in their lives, and one in 10 children has a serious emotional disturbance that, if untreated, can lead to school failure, physical illness, substance use, jail, and even suicide. And whereas, stigma and stereotypes associated with mental health illnesses often keep people from seeking treatment that could improve their quality of life. And whereas, mental health is a biological-based brain disorder that cannot be overcome through willpower, and is not related to a defect in a person's character or intelligence. And whereas, a mental health recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people with a mental illness to live in a community of his and her choice while striving to achieve his or her full potential. And whereas, a mental health recovery not only benefits individuals with mental health disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, but also enriches the culture of our community life. Now, therefore, we, the council of the town of LaPlata, do recognize the month of May, 2023, as Mental Health Awareness Month, and encourage our citizens, public, and private institutions and businesses to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health illness and the need for appropriate, accessible services for all people with mental health illnesses to promote recovery. This is signed by the council, the town of LaPlata, Janine E. James, Mayor, James Goldsmith, Councilman, Matthew D. Trolinger, Councilman, Evelyn Bryant Ward, Councilwoman, David M. Jenkins, Councilman.
Thank you so much. That is a very important way that we need to recognize mental health, and we have that whole month to really drill down on some of the recognitions there. So thank you for reading that. Appreciate that. All right. Next on our agenda is a swearing-in of a new officer. So Chief, come on down. I'm going to let you lead first, and then I'll come there.
Evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to introduce Ronald Ostogi to you. Officer Ostogi completes comparative compliance at the Prince George's Community College Police Academy on Friday. Officer Ostogi began his career in law enforcement as a civilian police officer with the Department of the Navy on Indian Head, and he served there between 2008 and 2021. He rose to the ranks, through the ranks, to the position of corporal. Officer Ostogi departed Indian Head for the Arlington County Sheriff's Office. He graduated from the Northern Virginia Criminal Justice Training Academy in December of 2021. He worked there briefly, but had the desire to work for a more traditional full-service law enforcement agency. Officer Ostogi and his wife are longtime active members of the Prince Frederick Rescue Squad. He holds a CDL, Bobby Don't Try to Recruiting. He's a driving instructor for the Southern Maryland Driving Academy. Upon completion of comparative compliance this Friday, he will begin field training with one of our senior officers. So we are more than happy to have Officer Ostogi join our ranks and the experience he brings with us.
Wonderful. Well, let's swear him in before he's recruited by Bobby.
Are you ready to raise your hand? Would you like to answer? I am Ronald Ostogi.
I am Ronald Ostogi.
Do you swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
You swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of Maryland?
To the State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the duties of police officer of the town of LaPlata?
I will execute the duties of police officer of the town of LaPlata.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Your greetings and welcome.
I'm looking forward to serving the town of LaPlata.
My congratulations.
Glad to have you on the team. Thank you.
Would you like to introduce any of these to us? Because I don't know a lot of these that are here.
This is my wife Jenny, my daughter Sarah, my son Arden.
We're all involved in the town. Chief, I need to...
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, my friend, neighbor, and the head of the Stroke Smart campaign is Shelley Stein. All yours.
Good evening, everyone. How's everybody? So tonight, we're here in honor of May being National Stroke Month, and we're going to talk about stroke awareness, stroke prevention, and stroke education. Go ahead with the next slide. So, stroke education, prevention, and early recognition is a community involvement activity. It takes everyone in the community in order to make an impact when it comes to stroke. We can work hard to educate, but if someone's stroke goes unrecognized because we haven't gotten to everyone, then it impacts our entire community, one person at a time. Our first responders, our hospital, our community members, our business leaders, everyone is responsible and encouraged to learn how to spot a stroke, stop a stroke, and save a life. Together, we can make a difference. Next. Facts about stroke. Strokes account for about one in every 19 deaths. Strokes are the fifth leading cause of death in the United States, the third leading cause of death in the state of Maryland, the fifth leading cause of death in Charles County. Strokes are the leading cause of severe long-term disability overall, and strokes occur in every racial grouping, but the African-American population does have the largest number of strokes in comparison. More women than men have strokes every year, and all those strokes typically affect those over the age of 65. Strokes can and do occur at any age, even in children. We're seeing strokes as young as 22 years old at the hospital. So it can happen at any time. Next slide. So on February 22, 2022, the town of LaPlata declared themselves a Stroke Smart community, and what this did was open the avenue for an increase in stroke education for our citizens, so that everyone in the town of LaPlata had the opportunity to spot a stroke, stop a stroke, and save a life. They had access to materials through the website. There's a tab on the town of LaPlata website that accesses Stroke Smart materials. There's Stroke Smart materials at the town hall, and we attended a number of community events. Next slide. So we attended the Shamrock 5K, the LaPlata Bed Race. We did senior center visits, and we saw, we went, we got to enjoy, but we also participated with education in several of the town hall concerts. And I want to commend the LaPlata Police Department because they actively assisted us in getting stroke education out to our citizens through their Coffee with a Cop activity all last year. They were able to take our magnets and do education through different senior centers in different communities and teach how to spot a stroke. So thank you to the town of LaPlata Police because we couldn't have reached as many people without you. Next slide. So what can we do in our community in order to prevent, recognize, and stop a stroke? We need to learn how to become Stroke Smart. So what does that entail? It entails learning what a stroke is. It entails learning how to spot a stroke, and it entails learning that a stroke is a medical emergency. Next slide. So what exactly is a stroke? A stroke is a sudden death of brain cells due to a lack of oxygen caused by a blockage in the blood flow to the brain. Or sometimes it's caused by a rupture in an artery that's leading to the brain, leading to the tissue of the brain, and it leads to tissue death. Stroke can cause lasting brain damage, long-term disability, and even death. Next slide. So what can we do about it? Everyone should learn how to spot a stroke, and the mnemonic BFAST is one of the easiest ways and one of the easiest ways to remember how to spot a stroke. So B stands for balance. It's a loss of balance, a headache, and dizziness. And not ordinary dizziness, the dizziness that causes like a room-spinning sensation. E stands for eyes, which is vision. So it can be the loss of vision in one eye or both eyes. It could be double vision. It can actually be blurred vision. Sudden onset of visual problems is a medical emergency and can be the sign of a stroke. F stands for face. If someone's face, when you ask them to smile, is uneven, they could be having a stroke. If you're looking at a loved one and suddenly they look like they have a facial droop, this could be a sign of a stroke. A stands for arm weakness, but it also stands for leg weakness, and normally the weakness is on one side of the body. S stands for speech, and this is difficulty, not only talking, but also difficulty understanding speech. It could be one or the other, or it could be both. And T stands for time, time to call 911. A person doesn't have to have all of those symptoms to have a stroke. They only need to be recognized as having one of those symptoms for them to be a potential stroke. So we don't want people to delay. We want them to call 911. Next slide. So a stroke is a medical emergency. When stroke symptoms are seen, we want people to immediately call 911. We don't want people jumping in the car and coming to the hospital. People that come to the hospital by 911 for a stroke, research says that they do better than people that drive themselves to the hospital. Ninety percent of the strokes can be treated with either a clot-busting medication or through surgery, but the patient has to get to the hospital in time. Time equals brain. 1.9 million brain cells die every minute that a stroke goes untreated. Don't hesitate if a stroke is suspected. Be fast. Calling 911 gets your treatment started right away. Next slide. In 2022, Charles Regional Medical Center saw 218 patients that they diagnosed with a stroke. Of those 218, 37 were treated with clot-busting medications in order to stop their stroke, and 18 of them were transferred to a tertiary care center and had a procedure called a thrombectomy, in which they go in with a catheter, and they actually pull the clot out. And so 18 people were able to be transferred to help stop their stroke. But when you look at the fact that we diagnosed 218 patients with a stroke, but we only were able to give that medicine to 37 people, and only able to send 18 people out for a procedure that is life-altering, if you look at the chart below, it's, I know it's a little hard to read, but towards the beginning of the earlier times that people come to the hospital for stroke within that three-to-four-hour window, if you look towards the end of the slide, you'll see that one big, tall, red line there. That is at nine hours and greater, and the majority of our patients are still coming to the hospital nine hours or greater after their stroke has started, and we want to impact that. Our whole goal with Stroke Smart is to get people to realize that they're having a stroke and come to the hospital to give themselves the opportunity to be considered for the medicine or possibly for surgical treatment. Next slide. So what can we do? Being Stroke Smart is a community effort. It takes everyone. Always remember to be fast to spot a stroke. Call 911 immediately if a stroke is suspected. You too can become a stroke hero and pass your knowledge on to others. Let's make it our goal to educate everyone in LaPlata. We want everyone to know how to spot a stroke, how to stop a stroke, and how to save a life. If you want more information on how you two can be involved, or you can be involved to become a stroke hero or have Stroke Smart education presented at a meeting or an event that you're holding, please contact me at 301-609-4306. My name is Shelley Stein, and I'm the stroke coordinator, and we can make arrangements to get your event covered or to get you education or even just educational materials. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Well, don't go anywhere yet. I have a question for you. Actually, it's a request. Could you please share with us the story of how, especially Virginia, is now a bunch of Stroke Smart cities and counties? Can you tell us the story of how it was formed?
Yes.
I thought that was a beautiful story.
So there's a gentleman who lives in Virginia. His name is Alan Stillman, and Alan Stillman's life was drastically altered as a young boy by a stroke. He and his mother both lived with his grandmother, and his grandmother had a stroke that went unrecognized, and his mother had some mental health issues, and it took her days to recognize that his grandmother was suffering from a stroke, and it was a stroke so devastating that it eventually took his grandmother's life. His mother, Alan's mother, couldn't deal with the grief that she felt and the guilt that she felt because she didn't recognize her mother's emergency, and she took her own life, which left Alan to be an orphan, and he went through foster care, and as he grew up, he developed his own company and worked with the military and did a lot of things as far as trying to find the easiest, quickest steps to accomplish something. And one of the things that he did, because it meant something to him, was help come up with an easy way that's very similar to be fast and how to spot a stroke. It's like a three-step thing. It's how to spot a stroke, stop a stroke, and save a life, and he has made it his business, because he is a resident of Virginia, to get not only the state of Virginia to be Stroke Smart and get education out there, but all the little towns, municipalities, and towards everyone in the state of Virginia becoming Stroke Smart. Now, in the state of Maryland, we are doing very... We have the city of Westchester. We have...
PG County has declared itself Stroke Smart, and last year, Governor Hogan has signed a declaration, a proclamation, to make Maryland a Stroke Smart state, and feeding off of that, a group that I belong to that has 50 stroke coordinators from across the state of Maryland, we have been working with the Emergency Medical Services to create a statewide video on Maryland Stroke Smart.
It should be released in May. It's going to have a lot of Charles County in it compared to some of the other counties. I'm very proud of that. We have two medics in our county who are going to be in the video, and one of our dispatchers from the EMS dispatch that's going to be in the video. And then they took different places across the state, different hospitals, different EMS. They're teaching BFAST. They have different neurologists talking about the importance of stroke. Even our governor, Wes Moore, has a statement in the beginning about how to spot a stroke, stop a stroke, and save a life. And the video, when it's released, it's about seven minutes long, and we're hoping that it'll be picked up by the news, and we can use it locally and just get the word out there so that Maryland can become like Virginia and be Stroke Smart and protect our residents, too.
And you'll be at our Celebrate LaPlata again?
Oh, yes, I will be there, and I will have our magnets and education. We'll be doing blood pressure screening. We will be having diabetic education and hypertension education, so we'll be addressing a lot of the risk factors that lead up to stroke.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing that story of tragedy, but you know what? Something wonderful came out of that. Do I have any... Go ahead.
Thank you. Just a real quick anecdotal story. My late father-in-law in New Jersey was sitting at the kitchen table, and his son-in-law, who was an EMT, he started having a stroke because his face got uneven. They called 911. They got him real quick, and in route, they diverted him to a hospital that specializes in stroke. So when he got to the emergency room, they were ready for him. No waiting. Boom, he went in, and he survived and did very, very well for a number of years beyond that. So thank you again for doing this.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm glad that he got the time that he got.
We just have to start letting the young residents know how to start to recognize a stroke. So
Yes.
That is our effort. Good. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And we do have your proclamation, too. That is signed. There we go.
We have not all signed in.
To speak?
Oh, no, you don't have signed into being president. This was your first year.
Unless you want to speak, and you know you are more than welcome to speak. I love hearing you. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. We are on to public comment, and I do have a few. I have... I have just one speaker. Just one speaker tonight? Maggie? Come on. If you could state your name, whether you live within the incorporated town limits, and try to keep your comments to three minutes, we would appreciate that.
We'll work on that.
All right. The floor is yours.
Okay. My name's Maggie Lerrick, and I do live here in LaPlata. I live right over in Edelen Station. I find it really interesting that we're now a Stroke Smart community after what I heard today over at the county commissioner's office in terms of the fact that the county has a woefully inadequate EMS staff at the moment. The EMS staff was there giving their budget and letting the county commissioners know how many more ambulances and how many more EMTs and how many more paramedics they need. They did a very nice presentation, and I would encourage all the council members to please review the videotape from today. It probably starts at about an hour, maybe an hour and 10 minutes into the commissioner's meeting, but they gave an example of a day in November where at one point during that day, the county had two ambulances to cover the entire county, and the only reason that there were two ambulances available was because there happened to be, that day, two volunteer ambulance crews available. They moved ambulances around trying to position them in heavily populated... um in heavily populated areas or centralize them or whatever. So I just want to encourage you. I mean, I know that the town of La Plata is issuing um building permits at a rapid pace. Slow it down. You don't have enough adequate EMS to take care of the people you have now, and it's only gonna get worse until they get caught up. And like I said, they did ask for more money for ambulances and EMS people and paid um paid EMS paid paid paramedics. More training, more encouragement for volunteers to to become um EMS folks.
Okay, thank you very much. Hey, anyone else that didn't sign up that? Come on. We'll get you to sign up at the end. State your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits, and keep it to three minutes if you could, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Glendora Rogers. I reside over off of Calmia Court. First, I'd like to say thank you for the assistance that was given to us with the trees that were cut down that were um bordering and over into our property line um that is there. However, we're still having some issues with the uh diseased trees in the common area. Over the past weekend, with the storm that came through on Saturday, a tree did fall down over our mailbox, our cluster mailbox, and um it was in a common area. The same area was hit in January with branches from that tree that fell down on the residence vehicle, which caused caused them to have to replace their vehicle. They replaced it, and then the storm came again this weekend and damaged her new vehicle. You know, she's a young, single mom with little kids. So our hope is that someone can come out or we can get a um landscaper or to call heartoculturist to look at some of the other overgrown trees. We're not asking that they be cut down, but trimmed so that um the dead branches, some are split and hanging, uh can be addressed. Also, we're having a a very huge issue with visitor parking. We had asked um the past couple of years if there were funds available for the common area in front of one twenty-one and the um the grassy area. That area is not being utilized. We would like to see if it's possible to try to flatten that area and make some additional visitor parking. When you have an extra guest, if you're we're we're looking at maybe two cars per household. If you have an extra guest or you want to do something as a family unit, there's no parking available. Maybe um we can talk with or see if La Plata Mill or if maybe parts of social services can be utilized for our overflow. Uh, we're just really in need of extra parking instead of parking on the sideline, which I know is not a good thing to do, especially if we have an emergency in the area. Also, there is a mailbox, the mailbox that the um tree fell over. Is it possible? We have a unit there that has um a food truck. It blocks our mailbox, and a lot of us get in after hours, and we're wondering if there is a light that can be put up somewhere there, or if the inspector can come by and reevaluate moving or having that homeowner move that food truck that blocks our cluster mailbox so that we feel protected going to our mailbox area.
Thank you very much. I will pass this um information along to our town manager who is listening and taking notes, but I really appreciate you coming in and um letting us know about this. You know, sometimes emails get shuffled around. It's so much more powerful to have you here, and I will make sure that to the town manager has this information and addresses it as he is whatever is in his purview.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's good seeing you. We can clap on that. Anybody else? It is so nice to see you all. Yes, there. Now, why aren't you here every Tuesday? We would love to see you. Well, it's the second, third, and fourth Tuesdays of the month, but the first Tuesday of the month is the planning commission. So if you don't have anything to do on a Tuesday, which it seems you don't, come visit us. We'd love to see you. But thank you for being great residents. We really appreciate it. All right, moving on to our monthly reports. Chief, you're up first.
Any questions?
I do. I'm gonna start off real quick and then open it up to everyone. Congratulations on being selected for the CLIA delegate. That is awesome to have one of our own on that. I know how passionate you are about CLIA, and um you do a fabulous job, not only for our town, but for the whole organization on CLIA. So that was um exciting. And the only question I have, and then I'll open it up for um the council is, do you have any update on a possible um police department?
Mr. Mandel and I spoke about that this evening. Uh, so uh I believe you'll be hearing from us at the first meeting in yeah, May.
Okay, well, that is
I think we have an action plan.
Thank you. Um, council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward three. Chief, so looking at the calls for service comparison twenty-one to twenty twenty-three. In January, February, March of twenty-one and twenty-two, the calls were up, they went down, they went up. Then in twenty twenty-three, the calls were up, they went down, they went down. Do we anticipate that to be a trend or can you identify what may have made that happen?
Well, part of it is we didn't have a winter. And when you don't have a winter, you have a lot more activity. Uh, it's just when it warms up. I I think that's part of the cause of effect. Believe me, we we follow this. It was either fifty-five or fifty-eight percent increase in calls for service last year uh as an organization. So uh we're hoping that that flattens out for us.
The training just seems to be different. It's an F, an up, down, up, and then this one is just down, down, down.
Yeah, it it ebbs and flows, but uh you know, when we look at uh January and February, um year to year, they're up. Uh, we're flat for uh March of this year, and I haven't seen April numbers, so.
But February for twenty-one and twenty-two were down. March, they went back up.
Yeah.
This year, in January, they're up. They went down in February, went down in March.
It it and I think it's driven by a couple of things. One, I think the lack of the winter. It just wasn't that cold. The other thing is what drives municipal part one crime is larcenies. So when you get new asset protection people or maybe one of the stores had a bad inventory, we see our calls for service go up, and it's it's usually temporary. Till the the next inventory or that asset protection person moves to another place.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. Thanks again, Chief, for the comprehensive report. This is probably a nitpicking question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. On the chart that has traffic stop data, what year is that for? Because I didn't see the label, or I'm I'm just trying to get an idea what year that was.
This is, uh, we can only fit on this. This is from April of twenty twenty-two through March of twenty twenty-three.
And then um on the the on the um chart that talks about the significant operational event, was that individual out of the county that you apprehended?
Yes, I believe so, and we we have arrest warrants out for that individual.
Right. And then finally, um, just an observation and again a comment on the slide that talks about training succession planning. Again, I want to compliment you and your staff for continuing that process. Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate the funding the council provides us to do that.
Yes, uh, Matt Challenger, Ward two. Thank you, Chief. I'm gonna take a look at another slide with you. Reportable collisions um through from October through March. Um, a couple of questions about that. Reportable collision, is that defined as the same way the state and the county define it? Basically, um, somebody's injured or a vehicle has to be towed?
Yes.
Okay, so if it's a fender bender, there's no EMTs or EMS needed?
We do an exchange of information. Yes, sir.
So it appears as though this data is consistently showing an increase, at least from October through March. Um, do you have any insight as to that? And it looks like year by year, it's it's gone up, or at least let's just take from twenty-two to twenty-three.
I think as we move out of COVID, we're seeing more and more people on the roads, and we're seeing more collisions because of that. If the council desires, we can try to drill down further to see where these collisions are occurring. Uh, you know, we we do write the collisions on Crane Highway. So a portion, a a significant portion of those that have to be written uh come off Crane Highway, but but there are other places in town that uh where the car has to be towed or someone's transported to the hospital.
Okay, um, increase in folks being down here, a bit, could that be a factor as well, like increased population, increase?
Well, yeah, I'm I'm sure it's part of it, but uh
I'd also mentioned with the, was it Middleton Nice Bridge being opened? We're seeing a lot higher volume of traffic avoiding the Washington DC Metropolitan Beltway by going up three oh one and getting north. Uh, yeah, I come down on a random Tuesday now, and traffic has backed up its centennial this for down three oh one northbound as far as you can see on random days where it used to just be right.
Yeah, I think it's the uh, I think Mr. Manuel's uh uh very correct on that, because if you follow apps like Waze, uh, as soon as something happens on ninety-five, the the kickover for bypass traffic is usually three oh one.
And Virginia Department of Transportation is advising travelers to use three oh one.
Really?
Okay, as a bypass around, once again, the northbound ninety-five cluster, if you will, uh something else.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, there was an accident, a pretty significant accident. Was it Sunday on three oh one?
Sunday, just north of town. Just north of town, yeah.
Turkey Hill Road?
Yeah.
That one's a bad one to come in.
Yeah, it's designed.
Any other um questions for the chief?
Just one other question for the safety committee. We asked for crosswalks at Glen Auburn. That was that on the agenda. Is there any? Has there been any further discretion? We told that we could do that.
I'm sorry, council, and I'm drawing a blank. I think do we, did we meet on that, Michelle? Okay. I will follow up.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
And congratulations again. Next is uh Director Harrington. Come on up. All right, any uh questions for Director Harrington? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Jenkins from Board Four. Welcome back. Good to see you.
Thank you.
I I I was looking at the slide. We talk about planning inquiries and the citizen planning, citizen planning academy. I would wholly hope that that can be accomplished. That that I think that would do a great deal of work to to help our citizens understand the planning process. I I know you're doing a lot, but I think, and I know this is a lot of work, but I that was very encouraging to do that. I knew I do know that there's uh one that's being started in Baltimore County, and of course, they're a lot bigger than we are and a different form of government, but I know there's an organization that's starting a a planning academy up there as well. And then I was uh you talk about there's been five inquiries for annexations?
Yes.
And so what I'm I'm what what kind of input are you looking for us now? Because you you asked a question input about it. So what are you looking for from us, or at least from me?
So as a council as a whole, I'm looking for the general guidance consensus on whether um annexations are uh reasonable at this time. We can't deny applicants due process. If they want to submit an application, we cannot deny them that. But I would also like to make sure that as people are reaching out to me that I'm not saying, yeah, go ahead, submit. Everything's great. We'll take you through the process and we'll get you settled. And so if there's a general consensus on where the council is at this time, knowing where we're at with our development capacity analysis, water sewer, emergency services, um, if there's a general consensus on whether or not a annexation would be favorable or not moving forward, uh, that would be much appreciated by staff. Uh, Director Harrington, in light of um some information that was received today about the county talking about water appropriation, uh, and and I will start off uh this conversation here. It is um my uh strong desire not to mislead anyone and say come into the annexation process when we right now have to make sure that we have adequate facilities. So I am in favor of just um right now, not in not uh pushing forward any more annexations until we can really soundly say, here is our water appropriation uh solution. And I will open it up to council to give me your um input on that as well. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Madam Mayor, I am completely supportive of that. I think that we have enough annexations on the books right now that have not ex they they haven't expired, and so we owe it to them to give them the the adequate public facilities as we have it. And so I would really like to wait until this water situation is fully addressed, and we have something concrete to say that we can move forward with anymore.
I'll go down here. Councilman Goldsmith, what is your feeling on this?
We usually get the info presentation for someone who's going to be in the future requesting an annexation. I like those. That doesn't mean any commitments. It's just a matter of coming to us. We don't even make any comments, basically, uh, what they think they would like to do. It would also give us an appreciation for how much more we are looking at a need to be. So not maybe to do the full on the annexation, but allow the info presentation to take place.
Okay. Councilman Challenger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I would agree on putting that, putting any future annexations on hold until we get a sure understanding of our adequate facilities as it stands with everything that we have on the books. So, and I appreciate all the work you're doing to set this up. I think it's it's gonna be a real great guide for us and our neighboring communities as well. So hold it for now.
And Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. I would um echo uh Councilwoman Bryant Ward's and Councilman Challenger's comments about putting on hold. And I would hope and I look forward to the full implementation of the tools that your department has developed and will continue to work on specifically the development capacity analysis. I would hope and look forward to the planning commission using that tool. Uh, I look forward to the annual public services ordinance and um that and 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 I have other comments about that, which I will provide later, not at this forum. And so, and uh I I don't know the town in general, the staff, Mr. Director Stall and yourself are working diligently to figure out needed water allocation. So I think it would be prudent on our part to hold back and just wait and hold and see what we have. And then again, effectively use the tools that are being developed. Thank you.
And um and into in to incorporate Councilwoman Goldsmith's request not to actually have the applicant so much here or the proposed applicant, but if you could just, as you did here, just say we've had more inquiries, knowing that uh the consensus is now just to wait until we have a solid water appropriation plan. But um just so we're kind of kept in the know that there are other uh other parcels that are interested in coming in, just so we kind of know that. Absolutely.
Could I just add one? I'm sorry, go ahead and finish.
Oh, go ahead.
But I I just wanted to ask, or could we have more perhaps planning commission town council work sessions? I mean, I I personally found them very, very helpful and useful uh to to exchange ideas and have a good, robust discussion about the issues. So I would encourage that.
And I think that would be up to the chair and up to uh Councilwoman Bryant Ward, since she is our representative for the council on that. Um, uh, but you know, I'm always But, you know, I'm always, I'm always encouraging everyone to stay informed. Now, speaking of, it looks like you had a meeting yesterday with Muni City. How did that go?
It went very well. So we have closed out Phase Two, which is kind of the building, the software behind the scenes. We are moving into Phase Three. And that will be more on the technicalities, and they've set up a demo website that they'll give me access to. So we can start testing it and seeing what we need to fix and move forward with during Phase Three. And then Phase Four is when we get into the actual kind of training implementation before we get to the next few phases before going live. So it's making good progress.
Fantastic. Thank you for that update. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Director Stall, come on down. All right, before we open it up for any questions, I have to say, your team did an amazing job in Kings Grant. They had, they really were cheery. They were in good moods. They did the job. They got it done. It was 11:30 at night when they pulled out. I heard those trucks going by the house, but thank you so much for that. Only a few residents were affected by that, and I know that you have plans to go in there and do more analysis on there, but please pass on to your team. You did an amazing job. So thank you very much.
Some of us were out again last night until 2:30 in the morning, so it was another late night last night.
You weren't in Kings Grant, were you?
No, we were on 301. We were hooking up the car wash last night, but because we needed to take a water outage, we have to have to wait until after 11 o'clock when most of the businesses close, so we don't affect all of the businesses.
Well, thank you.
But it was good. We did get the manhole put in up there on 301. We were able to squeeze it between the major fiber optic line and our water line and get the manhole in for them for the sewer connection and also the water connection. So it worked out extremely well last night. Things. Thank you for, you know, on on any of these type of projects, especially late at night, things can be rather challenging sometimes. And last night, it, you know, it was a challenging project, but it was, it seemed to go fairly smoothly. We got everything hooked up. So I think the Willows Group will be very happy that they got their connection last night.
Thank you very much. I will open the floor for any comments for Director Stall.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins, your word four. Again, thanks for the report, and I just want to compliment you and the staff for providing that advance notice of the work that was being done on St. Mary's Avenue. That that got filtered out and it was very helpful. So thank you for doing that.
And I would just like to say on that, we we are paving.
Yep.
We are actively trying to put down between 4,500 and 5,000 tons of asphalt on a street road list that we have provided to to council and to the public. One of the challenges that we run into, we will, in scheduling is, of course, the rest of this week, they're calling for rain. And so when you put out a schedule in advance, next thing you know, we get a, you know, five or six days of rain, and it just totally backs the whole schedule up. And so it becomes a challenge. We're very hopeful that tomorrow we get both Howard Street and St. Mary's paved and before all this rough weather comes in the rest of the week. So it it is a challenge.
And and I certainly empathize and appreciate that. But and again, just that some sense of advanced notice goes a long way, even though it could be delayed because of weather or supply chain issue. So thank you again for the staff for doing that.
No problem.
Any other questions from council? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, that brings us to our treasurer, Ms. Larson. Come on down. Thank you very much for the report. Any questions for our treasurer?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, looking at the finance report, the general fund, and when you had the capital outlay and there was a deficit, I mean, expense more than, or, okay. So that was not expensive. That was a U-T date comparison.
Yes.
Okay.
It it's what we expensed as of March 31st last year compared to what we expensed this year.
And it was significantly less.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman James, again.
Thank you for the report, and I know this is going to be nitpicking again, but thank you for the charts, because that, to me, is very helpful, the visuals. So I appreciate your efforts in doing that. Thank you. And also, the the ARPA chart is very useful and functional. Thank you.
Easy enough. We'll we'll save all of our questions later on for this evening. Thank you. And Director Phipps. Any questions for Director Phipps? I have a comment.
Oh, okay.
I know. You're not going to get out of that. Great job on the farmer's market. I have, I went there, well, opening day was a little washout, literally, but it opened on Wednesday instead of the Saturday. And it's so much more robust on Wednesday, which is great. And on Friday, on Saturday, even this last one with the wind and everything, it was, it was very active. So the food trucks coming in, the different vendors. It is such a joy to go on Wednesdays and Saturdays. So thank you very much. I know that that has been your baby since you've been here and slowly letting go of the rains and your your two replacements have been phenomenal. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate that.
Any other comments? Easy peasy. Thank you. All right, that comes to, we are at a matter of council discussion, and that would be Carson again. Come on. If you want to take, if it's going to be a little bit longer, you can just take that microphone down and sit at the table if you want, or you can stand up there.
Depends on how many questions you got.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for listening to council and going back and talking with the auditors about our concerns. So hopefully, council has been able to look at the revised information that was provided to us, and I will open the floor up to council to ask any questions.
We do have Danny or Dan Kenny with us that can explain the reasonings behind the hours and the proposal.
What, it seems like that we all had questions. I was satisfied with the answers provided in your report, but so, good job.
Could you at least let him speak?
Oh, please let him speak. Did he already pop off? He's like, I'm out of here. I see you. Yes, yes, please, Danny. The floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Dan Kenny, partner with Mitchell and Titus. And pleased to have the opportunity to serve the town of La Plata. As you know, I retired from Cone Resnick. They no longer are in the business of performing audits for counties, cities, towns, areas, Board of Eds. Happy to be with Mitchell and Titus as a partner and looking forward to working with the town. You guys have experienced a lot of growth in the last few years. And our team that I had presented and put forth, I'm very pleased. One gentleman in the proposal, his name's Paul Garrity. He used to work with me at Resnick, and then he left Resnick and went to KPMG, one of the big fours, was a partner there for 20 some years, retired there, and he's now at Mitchell and Titus. Another technical person that we have is Steve Beloga. He's a former E and Y person. Ouzma Dorman, she's also has a lot of state and local experience. And so I'm really pleased with the team that I've put forth. And you guys, as I was telling Ms. Larson the other day, you are a town, but you're a big town. You know, you have, last year, approximately 69 million in assets, a general fund expenditure budget of almost $9 million, three proprietary funds, water and sewer sanitation and other. So you have a lot going on. And looking forward to, you know, working with Ms. Larson and and Ms. Ness, you know, providing them with with additional guidance on questions they might have as they experience different things. Also, to point out in our proposal, we're all, we also have an alliance with BDO. So if there's ever a need for additional IT questions and answers, talking about, you know, the systems that you have that's outside of the scope of the audit, you know, we're able to provide that. So I I think, you know, firming with now is well positioned to serve the town of La Plata.
Thank you very much. And and thank you so much, Corina, for having the comparison there between the two audit companies. It really made it very easy to to compare apples to apples. And one thing is, if if the auditors, for whatever reason, exceed the 600 hours that they are proposing, is there an additional cost to it? Or if they come in lickety-split and they're only using 300 hours, is there a, is there a price break on that?
I'm going to let Danny.
Danny, you get that one.
All right. So so great question. So the the hours that we included in there was an estimate of of what is anticipated to get all of that work done. And as you may or may not know, within your governmental entity, we have to opine on the governmental activities and the business type activities and all the major funds. So within that audit, you're not just getting an opinion on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented for the town in its entirety, but you're getting an opinion on all of those different opinion units. So that's why it takes 600 hours. The 600 hours is actually less hours than than what was incurred the year before, because I am hoping that, you know, with Ms. Larson and Ms. Ness working together and and having the experiences they've had, that, you know, we'll come in at around that number. But to answer your direct question, you will not be charged anymore if it exceeds 600 hours. Okay? And if for some reason it comes in at 300 hours, we will have a fair discussion. And but but I highly doubt, because I've done the audit and I know what you have, I highly doubt it's going to come under significantly less because it's always been more. But but I'm a fair person and, you know, I I would certainly entertain that. Or if there's some other way that I could come up with that the town could do certain things to carve out certain amount of hours, I'd be willing, you know, in the beginning, probably the following year to work with Ms. Larson and Ms. Ness to see if if we can reduce the hours some way somehow. But but once again, you're not charged based on direct hours. That's, you you know, you have that fixed fee. I just included that in there because I know how long the audit has taken, and I wanted everyone to be able to see, to be transparent. This is what it takes in order to do the work in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards.
Thank you for that explanation. Any other questions from Ms. Larson or Dan? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Appreciate you being here, Dan, and answering our questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
And so we need a consensus to move forward with this legislation, right?
I think that's after this.
Okay. Do I have a consensus to move forward with this legislation now that we have been clarified?
Yes.
No. Okay.
I'm okay with moving forward with it.
Okay. So we have a consensus to move forward. All right. Thank you very much. Next, I don't go anywhere because I think you're up for the FY23 budget amendment and ARPA reallocation.
Yes. So we, after reviewing the current ARPA expenses, we are estimating to be around $750,000, possibly slightly over that. And that would mean that we would have to do a single audit. A single audit would cost a lot of staff time and about $10,000. So in order to try to avoid the unnecessary single audit, being that we are literally probably at that point, I am proposing that we split the 65 percentile salary that was designated to be covered by ARPA in FY23 between FY23 and FY24. In doing that, that means $143,000 would be actually captured in FY24 expense instead of FY23, which would hopefully, if my forecast works out, keep us under that $750,000 to avoid the single audit. The other thing this also does, which I realized after the fact, it also helps out your FY24 budget in the fact that now all the salaries aren't coming out of your tax revenue. Part of that's going to be covered by the ARPA funds.
Will it impact, will our employees feel any impact on that? Okay, it's just, that's my figure.
They don't even know it. This is merely something that we noticed and figured, what can we do since it's just, it's such a minute thing that could actually affect our budget.
Okay.
Thank you. So wasn't a single audit included in the proposal?
It was, but if we don't do it, we're not paying for it.
So are we going to amend the proposal?
Well, the proposal is actually just for the actual audit. It did not include the single audit, because the single audit's under the.
Single.
Yes. Yes, but the amount for the actual audit, it's for the audit and the UFR. I'm not including that single audit amount into the legislation. I I removed that. Because we're not going to have it done.
So you're going to remove it from the proposal because it was in the proposal. Are we going to?
No, no, just, so the the amount, the, what was it, 78, 800, is for the audit and the UFR. It does not include, it would be 88, 800, I think, if we included that single audit.
So the ordinance will state the 78,000.
Yes, which does not include the audit, single audit.
Okay.
Yes.
That was my question too. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? So we're looking for a consensus.
Well, there's two parts to this.
Oh, Ben, please continue.
Well, after analyzing the amount that we were actually going to be covering for the 65 percentile, we are actually would have 32,000 unapplied because that wouldn't cover. We budgeted 325,000 for that to cover that 65 percentile, and actually, it's coming out to be 292,000. So that's leaving around 32,000 that aren't, that we cannot use for, because there is no expense there for that amount. So we are asking that we reallocate those funds to the ARPA consulting services because we feel we're going to need more funds to cover those services.
And can that be if we don't utilize that, if, can we reallocate that again?
Yes.
So this is kind of a safety net right now, and to make sure that the books are all balanced and with that $32,147, applying it to the consultant as a just in case, but if we don't use that.
We will probably. You're the expert. We will probably use that, yes.
Okay.
And then lastly, when looking at what we actually received and what we've allocated for the ARPA expense, we have $603 that were not allocated, and I'm asking, recommending that we allocate that also to the ARPA consulting funds.
So the 32,147 plus the 603 to make that. Okay.
Yes.
Any questions? Excellent. All right. So we're looking for a consensus to move this forward to legislation today with those corrections.
Yes.
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 And I agree. So it will be moving forward. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Please.
While we did batch this under one discussion item, it will take two for execution, it will take two items on the agenda under legislation to, like I say, implement this change, these changes, I should say.
Okay. Thank you so much. That brings us to matters of information. Do you have anything that is not on the agenda that you would like to add?
I do not at this time.
So let's go straight to legislation. Ordinance 23-12, Financial Plan Amendment for introduction only.
Yes, Madam Mayor, an ordinance concerning amendment to the town of La Plata fiscal year 2023 budget for the purpose of amending the town of La Plata fiscal year 2023 FY23 budget and all matters generally related thereto.
Thank you very much. We'll go on to ordinance 23-11.
Madam Mayor and Town Council, for introduction this evening, an ordinance concerning amendment to the town of La Plata ARPA spending plan, allocation and reallocation for the purpose of amending the town of La Plata American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, spending. spending plan and all matters generally related thereto.
Thank you. Uh, that'll bring us to resolution twenty-three dash fifteen, independent auditor contract for introduction and consideration of adoption.
It's Madam Mayor and Town Council, a resolution concerning independent auditing services, excuse me, audit tour services for the purpose of authorizing the town manager entered into a contract agreement with Mitchell and Titus L O P for independent auditor services and all matters related thereto.
All right, do I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three fifteen as written?
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three fifteen as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Aye. Uh, so four ayes, one nay, motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us to resolution twenty-three dash seventeen.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, for consider, for introduction and consideration of adoption, a resolution concerning World Migratory Bird Day for the purpose of urging all citizens to celebrate the observance of World Migratory Bird Day in the town of La Plata and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and the world at large.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept resolution twenty-three dash seventeen as written?
Madam Mayor, I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash seventeen, World Migratory Bird Day as presented.
And do I have a second?
Second.
And any discussion? I'll I'll just add one thing in here. If you haven't been following the purple martin, which is our um hometown bird, they are coming here and they're here already. And you can find them nesting over by the train station and also the hummingbirds are coming up here, so follow them online. So we have a motion and it has been properly seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. This brings us to our new business, the commission reports. We will start review, Councilman Goldsmith.
There's been no meeting of the, since I review of course since the last meeting.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Trolinger.
Yes, we met today, the beautification commission. It was great, uh, we had good attendance, uh, we talked about the clock being, uh, the planners are coming in on Thursday, so there'll be a beautiful spectacle for celebrate La Plata this weekend and for um other events here in town. We have our next meeting in May. We talked about the interplay between the beautification commission and potentially uh keep La Plata beautiful. So we're gonna keep talking about um how we can enhance both groups as we move forward. Um, but it was a really great meeting. I'm very thankful for all the time uh that our members put into our town.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Yes, um, so we had a planning commissioner to step down. Um, and we have a fifth um planning commissioner that serves as an alternate. And I would like to recommend the appointment of Gregory Sampson as our new um planning commissioner to replace Mr. John Mudd.
All right, um, would, I would entertain a motion on uh Councilwoman Bryant Ward's recommendation.
I'll make a motion to accept the Councilwoman Bryant Ward's recommendation for a planning commission replacement.
Do I have a second? I would second it. Um, any discussion? And all in favor?
Just, is there any reason why Mr. Mudd resigned? I mean, is there a reason? Okay.
All in favor of um having uh Mr. Sampson now as a permanent member of the planning commission board? Please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Please congratulate him on his new appointment. Does that mean that um we are looking for an alternate? Fantastic, thank you so much. And does that complete your report?
It does.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Jenkins.
Nothing to report.
Okay, um, but I do. So coming up this weekend, it's a busy weekend and we are going to pray that the rain either hits us Friday or Monday because on Saturday it's celebrate La Plata and you know those bed races are so much fun. And we are going to have Shelley Stein out there doing the the blood pressures and the diabetes uh screening and all that. So that is um twelve to four on Saturday. And on Sunday at Will's Park, we will be having autism awareness. We've got the pathfinders coming out and it, last time, they did such an amazing job. Um, the police will be out there in conjunction with that. You may have seen one of the uh squad cars that have the puzzle pieces on there. It, we need to bring awareness um to our community about autism. It used to be one in one hundred and fifty were affected. Now that number has significantly dropped that it's one in.
One in about fifty, much higher amongst the ways than it is.
Yeah, and so we need to to recognize um if someone is on the spectrum and they do such a great job of that. So that is on Sunday. On May sixth, um, I am so excited to announce that there is going to be a community refrigerator uh grand opening at Christ Church. They've been working on this for a while, so that will be, they're having a ribbon cutting on May sixth. On May ninth, one of our own little uh La Plata residents is going up to the uh Capitol, um, up to the governor's house for being recognized for District Four, which is Calvert, Saint Mary's and La Plata as the winner of If I Were Mayor contest. There were over twenty-two hundred um essays submitted and there were ten that were chosen. And um one of our residents that goes to Archbishop Neil was the winner. So she will be, her name is Natalie, and I am not quite sure how to say her last name, so she is going to be Natalie. She is, I will send pictures out um of this amazing accomplishment. Um, I can't wait to read the essay. I didn't choose it, was a committee up with the Maryland Municipal League that read all of these essays and hers was chosen for District Four. So that is very exciting. That on Friday, well, I don't want rain on Friday either. We'll have it till next week. Friday is opening day at the Blue Crabs. So I hope everyone will come out and support our local um uh baseball team here. And we also, um, you know, we're so appreciative of all of our employees. And we are having an employee appreciation day this week. They are the heart and soul of the town. They're the ones that do all the back, backbreaking work. Um, two-thirty in the morning, just kind of hanging out there at three oh one, putting in a manhole cover or getting phone calls in the middle of the night or the police working um all hours. So I just want to say how much I greatly appreciate all of our employees. And um I know that they will be recognized this week in just a little manner, but know that we greatly appreciate all your hard work. And with that said, that ends my report. Uh, and we are going to take a five-minute break so that we can move down to this table and then discuss how we are going to responsibly spend the money that we have. So thank you all for coming, but you can stay, just take a little break, it'll be long.
First thing about a black suit. Feel like I'm doing this. Oh, yeah.
Still above people.
Office stain on anything. No, thank you for coming. Thank you.
All right, is everyone here that needs to be here?
I believe so.
Yes. Okay. So we are going to discuss the manual budget discussion for operating funds.
There we go. We are going to discuss our budget for operating funds. All right, so the floor is all yours.
So you guys received the budget summary. These expenses, well, it has the revenues that I've projected. Mainly for the majority of the revenue does come from the real property tax. That information came from the county. In that number, I did include ninety-seven homes from Pine Grove that have not been captured from the county, but we do have building permits out. So I'm assuming we would be getting those use and occupancy permits. And then there would be property tax revenue based on that. So those numbers include that. Also.
We will say that is an unknown variable because they're until they sell those, they're not going to get the use and occupancy, therefore they're not going to show up on the books. So they could, in theory, sit there for a time.
Yes, yeah, I did that base merely based on the building permits that and assuming that this will continue, but I'm only capturing what we have done so far through February. There were another twenty in March, but they are not included in this. I did not, I just did those that I could, hopefully, we would get the use of occupancy permits for. Then there.
I would just say the last I talked to. I think it was me too.
Sold.
Sold.
Okay.
That's pretty.
Was it before February?
No, no, they didn't start, they didn't actually start selling until, I think, February twenty-fifth.
So then.
The special taxing district was one of the major that I don't think they wanted to close until they had that piece of the puzzle finalized.
Houses already, so they, right around the end of March, they started closing.
Right.
Because with the narrowness of the roads, it has made it somewhat tough because we've been talking to them about parking. And, you know, maybe limiting parking to one side of the street because, boy, they may park on both sides of the street. It makes for a very narrow lane down the center with all the construction traffic, so.
It's definitely a traffic calming measure.
Yeah.
Yep, that is. Do you want to join us up at the table since one of the memos is definitely, the first one is of yours? Can we take that first memo right here? Didn't, that's with the request for personnel. No other department, I mean, I know legislation is looking for town clerk.
Yes, but that was in FY twenty-three budget, and that's been a continuous position. This is only the positions that are above or additional positions in FY twenty-four that were not in FY twenty-three.
Okay, so I'm sorry if I'm going to ask questions that are not as intelligent as they could be, but in FY twenty-three, I'll take, since we're talking about the police department, how many positions were requested? And how many positions were filled, fully filled?
I can only tell you what was, well, I can tell you what was requested based on the budget that was approved. So based on the budget that approved, including the additional one that you guys did earlier this year, what was it, last month?
That was ten over at the hospital?
Um, yeah, it was one of the, yes. It would be twenty-nine point one employees because there's a halftime employee and a point six.
But they didn't, that's how many would be on staff? How many did they request and was funded last year?
Twenty-nine point one. That was what was in the budget.
An additional twenty-nine point one?
No, no.
Twenty, twenty. How many, how many did new positions so they request?
So, all right. So in FY twenty-two, there were twenty-four point five. And then in FY twenty-three, twenty-nine point one.
Okay, so. Almost five. Twenty, what did you say?
Twenty-nine point one for FY twenty-four, and in FY twenty-three, there was twenty-four point five.
Twenty-four point five and twenty-nine point one. Okay, so we're thinking almost.
Six.
Yeah, four point six, so. That, that points this.
FY twenty-two had twenty-four point five, and FY twenty-three had twenty-nine point one.
Okay, and they were fully funded, those, so they, they, okay.
Yes.
And then now for FY twenty-four, they're going from twenty-nine point one and they're asking.
For thirty-six.
For up to thirty-six.
Now, I know one in here says grant, but I don't have any documentation or anything that would provide grant revenue to cover that position.
And we know that, correct, chief?
That's correct.
The cycle.
Year runs different in municipal budget year, so.
Right.
Historically in the past, we've applied for this grant twice. The previous grant didn't fund it, and we would just kind of get to it when we got to it if the grant was.
If it was awarded.
And that would be a seventy-five, twenty-five for three years, which would be about twenty-eight thousand dollars for the first three years of that position.
There is another one, the mental health response, which has grant by it.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah, we've been, we've been applying for that. Each year, we're hoping that we hit it because it would be a model. But we just, we haven't been fortunate enough to have the grand honor.
So isn't a canine handler covered by the Rothenberg grant?
The dog would be.
Just the dog, okay, the handler.
If I can just.
Please.
I, looking at the memo, and Green works really hard with this as we kind of work through this budget and sort of brand. As you look at it as a detective sergeant position listed, our, our desire there was to reclassify the detective or to detective sergeant. We weren't asking for a detective sergeant and a detective corporal. We were just asking to reclassify that, and I think that's already incorporated into the budget. One of the things that we have seen is the workload and the detective bureau picking up, and it's not only the volume, but it's the type of crimes that our officers have been dealing with. We successfully handled the human trafficking case that may be three years ago that would have been sent to the Charles County Sheriff's Office. We had a burglary investigation that closed out with forty-one victims. It's a lot of time you put into that a lot. We had a lady come up from Florida yesterday to retrieve some of her stuff. We had the stalking case out of the target. I would bet we had eighty hours in a weekend chasing that individual down and trying, we had a carjacking recently, so. The, the types of cases that we're, we're working now are much more complex. So having that detective sergeant would, would just be a reclassification. So that definitely is kind of where I said, we impressed the mental health officer. I'd love to, it would, it would be a model for Southern Maryland to have this. But if we don't get it through the DOJ grant, then we don't get it through the DOJ grant, you know? It's, it's something that we could use, but it kind of is what it is. Moving, kind of moving down the list, I'm. When I talk about these positions, I only ask for what I need. And I'm watching this town road, and I'm watching the burnout factor in my alterity. I'm watching the, in, in, coming from Prince George's County, one of the things I look at is call complexity. There's one thing about call volume, you can run alarm calls all day long, and you run alarm calls all day long. But we're seeing more and more of the type of calls that take more of our time in the street, take more of our time. It is in the fact being ready to investigate, so. I think we have figured out in our, in my, like, it's only backup. We're, we're willing, we know you have to have a balanced budget. We understand that. But we also know we have, have, have to balance that with the need, so. We're willing to, the position that we're asking for for the surveying to take over evidence, that would take a lot off of command staff. Because I have a lieutenant who basically manages evidence. We're willing to defer that position. We're willing to defer one of the officer positions that we're asking for, and we'll see how the revenues come in in the future. We believe we have a solution like we have done in the past, the fund two of those issues. But as you may recall in the past, we had issues at the hotels, and that was probably before this council was sitting, but we had issues at the hotels, lots of calls for service. There were overdoses, so working with the town manager at the time and the council, we brought in the hotel and the motel tax, and that helped fund the position because we didn't have a hotel, the hotel tax in the past. And it really kind of put the people who were paying for it were the ones where the services were being rendered at the hotels and the motels. So that helped us fund it. When we looked at the issues that we have at the hospital, and it's nothing but call volume, I mean, we talk about it all the time, anything else, wouldn't we appear to everybody who said, hold my beer? And then they end up in the emergency room, they may be impaired or high or whatever, and the services are needed. So we balanced that with a partnership with the hospital. They pay fifty percent, we pay fifty percent, they keep our people on the road much more than they were in the past. We have photo enforcement coming up should go live July one, we meet every Wednesday or every Thursday at ten o'clock with our vendor. We took a look at what other municipalities throughout the state are bringing in revenue wise as far as photo enforcement. My goal with photo enforcement was for it to be a self-sustaining kind of program. That would include the officer who's assigned to maintain this, that it should be pretty much self-sustaining. We also want to expand the duties because we're moving the content to full-time. So part of his duties is to be parking enforcement. And I'm not talking about once we're writing a bunch of tickets, left wheels to curb, somebody who's twelve inches away when it says it's only supposed to be eight inches. Talking about enforcement of handicap and fire hydrant and fire lanes. We believe through those two sources, we would generate enough revenue to bring in to pay for the traffic officer position and the detective position.
Uh, questions, we'll start around there.
So this detective sergeant is replacing a detective. What's the difference in the salary in the detective corporal and the detective sergeant? So it wouldn't be the full amount here.
Be seven point five percent.
The, the amounts for these on the side, while you guys don't see, the amounts include salary, benefits. So I'm estimating the detective sergeant at one-twenty-six. And then a detective corporal, let me see if I have that in there. Yes, that's, that's the cost of the.
Yes. With fringe. Just that would be for the detective sergeant.
That would be. I don't have a corporal here.
The position would be vacated.
Right, I'm saying.
But how much are they right now?
So. Be seven point five percent plus whatever that would multiply with other things. There's one step in the paper.
My point, chief, is that it's already, we already have a detective corporal.
Right.
And so with that, you're not really taking on the entire salary because he's replacing him.
Yes, but I'm, I think we also need to look at the total number of positions because there was a lot of movement in the PD, well, I'm going to move three people to, from a lieutenant to captain, but I'm going to replace one, and then I'm going to move a detective. There's still the fact that there are five extra positions on the sworn and one in the civilian. So somewhere there's still those positions there.
So do you have a comparative analysis once we have, you know, whenever I'm moving a position off of a cost center and putting them onto another cost center, I take that salary fringe and everything that goes with them and potential incentives. So do you have now what it looks like, what it was with the positions that were currently there with us moving?
I don't have exact numbers, but I can tell you it's not going to be a lot. So if you're going just from one position, a seven and a half percent increase, so maybe ten percent at most when you add in the Maryland State retirement amount, the FICA. Yeah, it's, yes.
Yeah, and you have a fringe rate of what?
FICA is seven point six five percent. Well, I have it all separate. I don't have one, but I can tell you exactly, let me pull up another sheet.
So while you're pulling that up, the detective sergeant where it says one-twenty-six is really not. I mean, it will be one-twenty-six, but it's really not going to be the cost of it if it is replacing a detective corporal that will not be fulfilled.
It's promotion without backfilling the position.
Yes. So that one will disappear.
There's still.
Officer still there.
Yeah, there's still five positions.
No, but I'm just speaking of that one right there. So where it says a new position is a detective sergeant at one-twenty-six, two-forty-eight. It is replacing the detective corporal at ninety-nine thousand, two-hundred and fifty-eight, whatever that percentage is. So in my, I am not an accountant, I don't pretend to be. So to me, in my very simple mind, when we're asking for a new position of one-twenty-six, two-forty-eight, yes, we're asking for that, but that doesn't say, like, underneath it, what I would write in my little checkbook, it replaces detective corporal at ninety-nine thousand, two-hundred and fifty, so the net cost is.
That one.
Well, no, the chief is not going to backfill that one, that will.
Well, there's five.
That, yes.
My proposal tonight, I want to try to balance, so it makes life easy for everybody. I want to move the corporal to sergeant, and I think we, we, we can do that. The traffic officer and the detective, I believe we can cover with the other revenues coming from photo enforcement and parking enforcement. We, like I said, we did that with the hospital and we did that with the hotel motel tax. We can drop everything with the mental health officer, if we get the grant, I'll come back with my hat in the hand of the council and say, hey, is this the way you want to go? If it is, that's great, if it isn't, that's fine. And then the other officer position, we'll just take that off the table and we'll take the civilian off the table. Tonight, I think I can say conservatively that we can generate enough revenues through those programs to pay for those two walls.
Question for you with the mental health response and the grant, take the grant away, we don't get the grant as we have it. Is there a way to, and I don't know this, to partner with Outpass because they have the trained staff there that they do ride-alongs as part, they're very much wanting to be in the community, and I don't know if that is a stretch and Outpass, we do a MOU with Outpass?
It's something we certainly approached and talked about, you know? Talking to Dr. Abney, but the biggest challenge she has is finding people to hire or qualified to do that. So Outpass being a private company probably pays a little bit more than Dr. Abney does. So that is, that, that very long, I'm more than willing to sit down and have that.
I don't know if Mike and Sean over there would even entertain that, but.
You don't know until you sit down and have that.
Absolutely, and where I see, if you get your wish list here as presented, it would increase, the only way to really balance the budget would be to increase our assessed value from thirty-two percent up to point thirty, point three-six, four percent. What does that mean to, what does that mean in dollars? How much is each household of the thirty-two hundred homes going to be impacted?
So say if you take the, a three-hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, and that, say that's the assessed value. Right now, with the tax rate, they're paying one thousand, one hundred and twenty. With a increase in the tax rate to the, by four point four percent or point four-four percent, it would then increase the tax amount to the homeowner to one thousand, two-hundred and seventy-four dollars. That is an increase of one hundred and fifty-four dollars for the year.
Okay, and that's, and just so that we are.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I said point four cents.
So. I thought you said percent, point four cents.
So.
Zero point.
It's zero, so it's, so the tax rate would be.
Thirty-six cents or a period.
I want to make sure. Thirty-six point four cents per one hundred assessed value.
Does that take into account the differential that the county may give us? So if they do take in the.
Differential is not gonna.
Impact this.
Impact at all, there, that is a discount to you guys.
To taxpayers within the town who are taxed by both the county and the town.
Which is what our point thirty-two, our tax rate is, and it goes down to eight, seventeen and a half percent or eighteen percent.
I think it's like fourteen, something.
So wouldn't that, like, carry over, so?
From my understanding, it's a discount on your, so what would happen is, it, say you guys go, okay, we're going to go ahead and raise the tax rate to four point four cents. What you're paying now, as long as the county doesn't raise their taxes, is going to add four point four cents to the, your current tax.
So you're already taking into consideration, I mean, it's just going to be an even thing with the differential, so.
The differential is deducted from the county's tax.
Yes.
But from the county, from that, okay, 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 that makes sense, thank you.
Projections on the revenue that we're anticipating, but I know we talked about it with the cameras. And then do we have any projections for revenue for the traffic enforcement? To see what that.
It's a, since we have not had the cameras, it's, I, I find it very hard to predict a revenue we do not have any history for and do not have. As far as the parking based on the history that we did on parking, the last three years, we averaged about five hundred dollars a year in revenue in parking, and before that, the three years before that, and I'm assuming that's because of COVID, we averaged five thousand, three hundred dollars per year.
That was dedicated personnel to.
Yeah.
So dedicated.
I'm sorry, Brandon, to get that.
No, go ahead, chief.
Yeah, I, I pulled the numbers from the state of Maryland looking at municipal's photo enforcement. So in, in, I took a very conservative estimate looking at the city of Land River, they have two cameras. Their gross revenues are about four hundred and eight thousand dollars. Their net is a hundred and fifty-one, four eighty-four. We're going to have four cameras, and I can't tell you what's going to be generated or not. The city of Laurel has four cameras, now it's a figure of jurisdiction in us, they have nine hundred and twenty thousand in gross revenue, and they have seven hundred and seven thousand in net revenue. City of Mount Rainier with two cameras, one point four-three million, with seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars in net revenue.
Well, it's pretty good.
Yeah, you know, it's very close to the DC line. Yeah, I'm not looking to make, and I, when I make this presentation to the council, I, I'm not looking to make a bunch of money. I am looking, and, and it is what it is, people's speed. I'm looking for a self-sufficient program that covers this cost and that includes the officer. I'd much rather have three months, six months of the program being up, so I can say, yeah, this is definitely what it is. What I do know is my number one complaint is traffic. Speeding stop signs, this also would be assigned to this, this program as part of their duties, they would be assigned to looking into these speeding complaints that we get. Uh, as part of their duties, they would be assigned to looking into these speeding complaints that we get uh on weekly basis and to handle accidents. It would take the load off of patrol to a certain extent, so they're more focused on the call for service than they are uh about other things. To me, that's the backbone that we have to take care of. And when, it's like the hospital, if they're not at the hospital, then they're in the neighborhoods or they're in the business district handling calls. So I don't know what the council's uh position is, how comfortable they are, and, and I get it if you're not. But I know I've got this growing community and I've got growing calls for service. And I'm trying to, within the budget that we have, find a way uh to bring on a couple of expert ancillary details. That are gonna help take off patrol. Uh, and I'll quietly share this with you, you know, uh Chevy Chase. Um, and that's probably a bad example because they have the uh, the main thoroughfare that goes through. The town of Thomas Park has six cameras and generates two point eight million dollars in gross with one point six in net. We're not gonna hit anything like that, but I think it's fair to say that we should be able to cover an officer with the, the revenues. It is what it is. Uh, this, this is just my way of trying to think out of the box and present a solution. Uh, and then when you look at the track or the parking, well, we had Mr. Van Cleef uh do a study. And over about an eight-hour period, he found, and, and the eight-hour period was over a couple days, because I didn't want a lot of his task that he just, as you did. Found thirty-three uh, bring it right up here, so I got it in my notes. Uh, he had thirty-three handicap violations and thirteen fire lanes. It's ten thousand, two hundred dollars that people pay. Now, I know people aren't gonna pay at all. And the company that we've been talking with to do this electronically and make it much more efficient. Uh, would do the backend on collections if we decide to go that route. What I do know is that people park in the fire lanes in front of Wal-Mart's and Targets and they do those sorts of things when they wanna steal. I also know that if you park in front of a fire lane and there's a fire, uh, the fire department does a whole lot of damage to people's vehicles. Because even if there's not smoke, they're gonna run a hose, uh, and they have to do what they have to do, that's what they do. Handicap, I'm sorry if you park in a handicap violation and you're not handicapped, you should probably get it too.
It's a pet in your mind.
Oh, mine too, especially when I push my father.
Our way of saying, hey, we, we need what we presented to you, there's no doubt about it. We're willing to cut back and if the council says no bodies, we get it, no bodies. But I'm just trying to present something that's gonna help. We, we see the pay point study and it tells us where we should be. And we're just trying to make sure we inch our way there.
So would you keep the, the dog handler?
The dog handler, we would probably defer for a budget or two, you know, and, and uh. They're, they're a premium, but one of the things I always try to do is I look at what's going on legislatively in California. Because two years later, it's gonna land in Applewood, and there was a lot of uh, uh legislation about use of canines. I don't know if it passed or not in California, but it's kind of a barometer that I follow to kind of know when the trend's gonna be here in Maryland.
Is it, does that include a dog?
We, there's a lot, the task force uh that we belong to already offered to pay for the dog.
Oh.
The Roethlisberger Foundation is how most agencies get their dog, Ben Roethlisberger. So uh, and there's costs associated with it.
Cause I, uh, when I did that, when Jim Goldsmith and I went to the Chers Academy, they said that there's a state. They'll pay for one year maintenance, some for the dog or something, there's some kind of grant program, so.
Yeah, they're, they're great programs and, and people love, love dogs.
Yeah.
Usually don't have to buy a vest, two people get together and buy a vest for the dog.
And, and I happen, we happened to see uh how effective and they gave us actual cases where they. In one case in particular, a, a, a dog saved an officer's life during a search at night.
The uh.
They found a gunman hiding out.
Yeah, the young child that was found.
Right.
Uh, deceased, I think several dogs led to that.
That's, uh, David.
Giving up two of the positions, where the, what is that, it gives up the um.
I think there's.
The dog handler and the uh, the last one on the list.
Alright.
The custodian.
The custodian.
I think there's two sides of the equation. There's the expenditure, but there's also the revenue. And is council comfortable with uh us projecting the revenue for the cameras, for example, which we don't have any historical data? Chief has provided us with some examples uh as well as what Ryan will be doing as far as parking enforcement. I think, you know, we would have to add that to one end of the budget and then look at what Chief is saying and sort of maybe. Look what that impact would be to our overall number. Uh, would be one way to go about it so that we're not sitting here type, talking in hypotheticals. We can crunch some numbers and get back to you with some specifics. Uh, I don't know if that council feels that would be beneficial.
So I've listened to these dog tax, they got tons of unpaid payments and there, there are no recourse. They issued these tickets, there's nothing saying that people are not paying them. Is there any recourse to make them pay them? Obviously, it doesn't work in DC. They, you know, they've done everything. They got to the tune of over two hundred um. Two hundred thousand dollars in one word um for outstanding traffic tickets and they were, with the council member was discussing it. So what's the recourse? If you issue the ticket, what's to say that we actually get the revenue in?
Well, there's, there's two recourse's and you can take step one and then step two. One is you work with the vendor who issues the tickets for you and they can do the collections calls and the collections letter. After that, you can flag the tags, so they're not able to renew their tags until they come and pay their parking citations. Uh, we did it in Greenbelt and we were successful. I think a big difference, I, I think you got a real good example there. Between Maryland's program and DC's is DC has made the cost of the citations so high. That people, and, and a lot of folks who went to DC uh don't live in the area, so they don't care if, if they paid the ticket or not.
Right.
The tickets here are around a forty dollars, whether you're doing fifteen over the speed limit or you're doing fifty-five over the speed limit. And it's a civil citation against the vehicle and not against the operator. So that's why we're able to flag the tags. Yeah, we talked about it when I was in Greenbelt, we had about a sixty to sixty-five percent uh percentage of people who paid theirs. And then we had to go back and do some sort of collections on the other.
So we would do sixty-five percent of the projected revenue to, to be on the safe side or maybe a little lower margin. And then see what that revenue would yield us against um the officers that you feel comfortable budgeting. If he's saying we can do away with three, we want the other three. And then we're looking at the fact that we're not that feeling with detective corporal. And I know there's a difference, I got you, but I'm just saying that, that position basically goes away because it's not gonna be backfilled.
Well, there's still six positions that are current, are.
But he's saying.
Are ultimate right now. Yeah, so if you fund three of them. Um, and how much was the estimate for the um speeding tickets? Did you say two hundred and twelve? I know you emailed it to me.
It was like two-ten for twenty.
Two-ten, okay.
Sixty percent of it in states, sixty-five.
Well, what's reported in the state of Maryland is actually collecting revenue. Revenue's not collected. We go back and take, the tickets were issued by each uh municipality. But what they report from gross income and net income is what's actually collected and not what's outstanding.
But you said that in Greenbelt, you collected about sixty-five percent of them and the other had to go to collections. So I'm looking at your Greenbelt numbers, if that's, if that's a number that you can bank on. And say sixty percent versus sixty-five percent to give us a greater edge of area, area of margin. And see what you can get of that if you do sixty percent times that two hundred and whatever thousand.
Two-ten.
The hundred and twenty-six thousand.
But those, that thirty-five percent that went to collection, what was the success rate?
It was usually pretty high. It was, sometimes it was two years down the road and they went to.
Yeah, but, and there's administrative costs.
Yeah, but they eventually get that.
And then I get it in this year, with this budget here. And so budget at a safe rate of the sixty percent that we know we can collect.
So.
And we get the rest, we're good.
The sixty percent of the two hundred and ten would be a hundred and twenty-six. If I subtract, if I only remove three of the position, it would leave a deficit of two hundred and eight thousand.
With the revenue.
So with the, with including the revenue with a hundred and twenty-six thousand in revenue and then adding in and then keeping three of the positions.
Um, I don't have any examples, but the revenue that he projected from the cameras.
Yeah, the two hundred and ten thousand.
I thought that was tickets, the two hundred and ten.
So no, that was the combination of.
That was the.
And these are, these are actual, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty is actual revenues collected. So that doesn't take into effect that the sixty percent, that's, that's already subtracted out what they reported in the state.
Chief, I have a question. Um, as to these positions that are listed that Karina listed for us here. To go forward with the traffic, traffic safety measures is what I'm gonna call it, that we, you previously presented to us. That's not required, an additional officer is not required to facilitate those. Cause that wasn't part of that presentation. Um, and we had talked about back when you presented it and you reinforced it tonight, and I think we gotta be careful about. Kind of ends justifying the means with these types of things, because we know DC, and I think part of their problem. Just part of any municipality's problem with these measures is they have to justify other areas. And so they're overzealous at times, and you talked about the, the expense, the ticket amount. Uh, you know, simple tickets in DC can be two fifty and then they double it within, I don't know, thirty or sixty days. And so nobody's, your normal person's not gonna pay five hundred dollars in ticket, parking ticket. So I can appreciate the civil citation difference and I can appreciate the moderate amount. But would you be open to having a. Analysis period of the traffic enforcement measures in a natural environment rather than kind of. And I know you're not asking for it to justify the positions, but to have a better idea of what it's actually going to bring in with real data. So that we can confidently say, hey, look, this is, this is fantastic in that we can now. Give the town what it needs rather than it kind of being cart before the horse. And I, I don't, I, 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 I think, you know, you've been very um transparent. You know, throughout my time here as to asking what you need, not what you don't, but, and I will say just for the record, I think it's. I think it's a little odd that I, we, we're only looking at one department here with the amount of the overall budget that we have. And I understand new positions are new positions, but we've got a lot of money in a lot of different places. And it would have been helpful to look at everything where we can cut back, not just new positions. Especially with all the new residents that we have potentially moving in. But um, would you be open to a kind of a test period of the traffic enforcement to see what it's going to do? I don't, you know, that, that means kind of opposed to the new detective. Until we have that funding already that we can, can see and put our hands up. Does that make sense?
So bring that as a budget amendment.
Well, it's something Karina and I talked about. Karina, if you wanna dive into that a little further.
So what we were thinking, because right now we do not have, the revenue sustained that additional operating cost. Is to come back and do a mid-year review, see how the um traffic cams are doing and how much revenue it's generating. See how well Pine Grove is doing and then see if we are now getting the revenue to sustain those positions for the long term.
But wouldn't you have to have a person in that position? So that, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, so the traffic officer, right now, you are having um. You, you're not writing tickets because you don't, this is the personnel to write tickets, uh unless it's egregious. But if you have a dedicated person like Ryan, who is now gonna be the traffic officer, that will generate the income. So you're kind of, he's turning, he's going from a um point sixty percent employee to a full-time equivalent, and that's part of the budget.
And that's gonna be part of his additional duties.
But isn't that the traffic officer, right? That, isn't that part of it?
He would be the one with the parking citations uh as part of his cadet duties.
And but with, with the um traffic cams, don't you need a specialized person to?
Be a SWAT.
Or an officer.
So. We will, by doing a um test period, putting a whole lot more work. On the existing officers to see if it works versus, I don't know if there's hiring them and, and um.
The one thing you don't wanna get into is committing, because once you hire somebody, you kind of have that commitment to them. And right now, I mean, the budget does have overtime in it. I know the chief has a lot of his officers doing overtime and that's part of the reason trying to get more officers to help alleviate that.
So wouldn't that mess with the budget a little bit? So if they're not doing overtime and they're doing regular hours, cause isn't overtime time and a half?
It is, and I have a budget in here based on historical um history, um, which honestly, let me look at the amounts. I don't see a whole lot of difference in the amount we've been paying for overtime really changed. So over um. Let's see, in FY twenty, there was a hundred and twenty-six thousand overtime and FY twenty-one, it went to a hundred and fifty-five thousand overtime. And FY twenty-two, it went to two hundred and twenty-four thousand in overtime. Um, this uh FY twenty-three was estimated two eighty-three, so even though we're adding more officers, it seems like there's still, the overtime's still going up.
Well, it's because of the increase of that. And wouldn't that, now that you have Pine Grove, that is a viable. Uh, construction over there and they're adding more rooftops and they're coming in at a pretty good. I mean, they've got what, already ninety that have um received permits from there? Wouldn't that help with the budget as well?
Well, I did add in those ninety-two into the estimate for the real property tax. So I went in and took what the building permits and did the estimate of what the home value was based on the building value and the land. And added those as revenue, property tax revenue in the budget.
And what about the businesses that are coming in that?
I don't have that.
Okay, because.
Yes, the other thing we need to keep note on, um, and I just learned this from um Councilman Goldsmith. There is no um tax cap on the business, but there is for the homes. And I know that the assessments are gonna be happening um in September and October, which will affect the FY twenty-three budget. So I went in and kind of looked at where we would be, say if it was at the cap of seven percent going up. And that would increase the revenue if it was at the maximum, um, three hundred and thirty-six thousand. But you, it's hard to say, oh, Pine Grove's gonna take off, it's gonna continue on. You don't know what's gonna happen and this economy is kind of.
But what about the businesses that you know will, now they may not, at least the buildings for the, the car wash. I don't know what they're gonna bring in for that, but their business is there. I don't know what the taxes are.
I don't get that. I get a um amount of the total current assessed um.
Personal property.
Yeah, well, the total, the personal property tax is totally different and it doesn't have anything to do with real property. But what I get, when I'm looking for the report, I printed it out, um. Of what our current assessed value for all properties as of um February. I believe that's when I got the report.
So new businesses coming in doesn't.
I would not, no.
Okay.
No.
That do, that you might go back, you guys look at what you can do, what concessions you can make, what revenue you're comfortable. Cause I understand projections, I, and I, the worst thing in the world is to over-project revenue and come in over budget. That is, that is, and you cannot explain it, you know. They think you have a good idea of what it's gonna do and it doesn't. You know, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three were examples for me. So I get it. I know, I know how to feel and what you're trying to accomplish. So I'm, I would like to ask, as opposed to us, you know, not having all the information that you have. I don't know what you, you know, we don't know how many of those ninety-two homes that got promoted are gonna sell. We've got homes that are sitting, haven't moved. If you guys can come back, you know, go back and have a discussion. He's saying he's willing to give up three officers, look at what you can get in terms of revenue for those items that he's proposing. And see where we land and bring it back to us. I, you know, that would be my idea because we, we don't have the information.
Well, in the sheets, it does. Well, in the sheets, it does give, um, pretty much the breakdown of what each account is being budgeted for. And really, if you, if you're looking at to increase revenues, unless we get grants or have, can, and you guys are comfortable with forecasting for the, um, tickets, there's really no other area for me to pull revenue from. I've, I've gone through the budget and I've identified, um, different expenses that I could, um, under the capital projects, all of that cost for our capital project are coming from fund balance. Everything that was related to ARPA is coming from the ARPA funds. And then I went back in and looked at the reserves, because we, we do transfers and we record them as expense for the vehicle reserve and the, um, building reserve. And I took that and said, okay, we're going to do a fund balance transfer. So it's not coming out of our operating revenues to cover those. So I'm doing a fund balance transfer for, that's pretty much, it's moving from general fund balance to a reserve fund balance of the two hundred and fourteen thousand. And then I went through all the, um, expenses that we have as operating expenses that are not reoccurring every year, such as, um, education, such as a fifty thousand grant matching for beautification. And I said, well, since it's not reoccurring, let's take it out of fund balance and that, those totaled up to a hundred and sixty-three thousand. So we are right now funding other costs through fund balance in the amount of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand already coming from fund balance to cover the current request of the, these are for each of the departments.
Gotcha. So you, you, you're saying that over the years, we've spent from a hundred and twenty-six thousand now up to two hundred and twenty-three thousand overtime. So is there a way we can, if, if we reduce overtime? And I don't know how you do that because you're still coming up short with staffing. If you reduce overtime with that fund.
That, that would be a big burden on the management to try to figure that out and, and limit the officers when there could be a critical call. It's, it, that would be a hard thing to say, oh, you can't work overtime. But then the need is there suddenly and that urgency, I would think that would be a hard thing to say to cut out.
But wouldn't that be alleviated if you hired a person?
Well, we've been hiring new people and overtime.
Same here to that, and I, I see it all myself, but overtime and straight time really honestly costs the department the same. Because right now our, our fringe benefits cost us close to fifty percent. And so what happens is you're paying a hundred percent of the salary plus fifty percent for fringes. When you bring someone in on overtime, you won't, it only costs you time and a half. So really it's costing you the same whether they're working. And that's where the time and a half came from originally was you're not paying benefits on that overtime. And so you're giving that additional cost back to the employee and not to the town. So they, they're really, uh, at least in my department, there isn't a whole lot of differential between straight time and overtime. It's just for the most part, the overtime is budgeted.
Well, you know, I budgeted, I budgeted. Well, it depends, again, it depends on the employee, because if the employee selects a single plan and health insurance, they're not going to pay as much as a family plan. A family plan is running the town thirty-six thousand a year for an employee. If single plan is around, I'd want to say eight thousand, seven hundred, something like that. So.
Range, a range of rates.
Because it varies. I mean, um, so the health insurance plays a large role in that. If you have a public works employee um, making forty thousand a year, but we're covering thirty-six thousand of, for their family plan, yeah, that's going to make a big difference. But if you have a public works employee making forty thousand, but only covering eight thousand for their benefits, that's not as much as.
So you just don't have a range of what you're afraid to give. I know that.
I mean, it depends.
Twelve percent.
It depends on the employee. If you, you can't, we don't have it where the employee, an employee that makes eighty thousand and we're only paying for the single plan. I mean, that's, we're only paying ten percent, but if they're on the family plan, we're spending a lot more. Now we do have like FICA, that's seven point six, but, um, the, um, the Maryland State Retirement is eleven point four-two, I think, on their base salary, doesn't include on the overtime.
But I just, you know, when I do my salaries, in order to get my fringe, I do the total salaries times twelve percent.
I do each individual employee. So I take the employee, I calculate their salaries, I calculate what the FICA is going to be with the Maryland State. I add in what the benefit coverage they currently have, um, workers comp, all of that is on each individual line for each employee.
Good, good done. You don't have a total that says fringe.
No, but I can get you.
And so take that total.
Uh, actually on the bottom of this, you're, um, for the town fringe benefits is two million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, four seventy-nine.
And take that and.
And if you want to, if you want to look at, yeah.
And Councilman Goldsmith has been so patient.
I have been following the rules.
There you go. You have been. You, the floor is yours to ask a question.
I want to, it's not supposed to question. I want to make a couple of statements about it. We're in a period of uncertainty right now. We're going to have the tax assessments being done at the end of this, uh, calendar year. That's what the tax property taxes is such. We got Pine Grove going in. We really don't know what those figures are going to finally be. They're selling three fifty, four hundred thousand each type thing. And then, uh, what was the other thing? I had a third point there. But bottom line is at this point in time, anything we do with additional positions you want to have, and I understand your willingness to make concessions as such. You're saying if we gave everything he was asking for, we would take four point four percent additional property taxes. I don't want to do any increase in property taxes right now because of all these uncertainties. We'll know if we have income coming in from the, uh, uh, lights, uh, stop signs or things of that nature next year. So if necessary, defer everything for one more year. But if you get down to say two people you really need to have, which are high priority for the two people, we should be able to find some way in there. I mean, with the budget our high, as high as we have, finding positions for two people. And, and one of those is really not the hundred and twenty-six thousand. I think we're getting caught up on that. It's a promotion. So all of this is a promotion. Is that accurate or not? Or?
If that detective sergeant is moving somebody from corporal to sergeant and vacating the corporal position.
Okay.
Feeling the corporal position.
We're not asking you to fill. Now, down the road as the community grows and.
Yeah.
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 But not keeping it on the books. See, I see where you're coming from and I see, so it's on the books, it's open but not filled. So you have to.
Well, if it's not going to be asked for, then it needs to be removed completely. Because right now it's in there as a request. So I would have to remove one of those five sworn positions if it's not going to be filled.
Which would impact the bottom line on this.
Well, yes, it would, well, it would remove the position as a deficit.
I'm sorry?
Right.
It would reduce the deficit.
You just want to remove one person often and vacate.
All right. Because right now I, when I look at the number of actual positions you're asking for compared to, um, the previous year, you're, you're going from twenty-nine point one to thirty-six. And that's what, so I took out the ones that you were going from part-time to full-time and saying, we can fund those, we can handle that. Now I've got the other remaining six positions that we did not have in FY twenty-three and that are now being, um, forecasted for FY twenty-four. And those six positions are the ones listed. So if you're going to say that I'm going to remove the detective positions, that means it drops down to five positions, which reduces the deficit amount that we have to cover for all positions. And if you say, well, I'm only going to do two positions total, we then have that deficit around two hundred and some thousand, which if you want to make a forecast on the revenue and say that it doesn't come in, then the town's got to be comfortable with saying, all right, well, fund balance is going to have to cover it.
Then now some of those other positions will be replaced as well.
What I did is I looked at the total count. So if he's replacing a position, then it wouldn't have increased the account. That position should have been there and the same count should be, but we're now, we're going over six point nine positions and point nine of it is moving from part-time to full-time. So that leaves six positions, that's more than from the previous fiscal year.
Chief, so what are the positions of, which of those six positions, what are they replacing? They could be taken off of the budget?
Well, the, yeah. These were requests for new bodies. So detective sergeant, sort of just a promotion as we said, that's, that's, I think we understand that. The others were additional positions. Now, when you look at the grant, I'm, I understand, I mean, we're, if we get the grant, we'll come back and say, we have twenty-eight thousand dollars. I could probably find it in my budget if I had to.
Yeah, twenty-eight thousand, I'm not worried about.
Right. The, the, yeah, it's one, it's listed as one twelve seven nine, the seventy-five twenty-five, exactly. And that would be for three years. We're, we're fine. We'll move evidence, custodian, we'll, we'll look at the future budgets. The canine hammer, we can look at a future budgets. I, I, I'm really kind of looking down at that traffic officer and the detective. Now, one of the things that was brought up is, uh, the, the cost of overtime, uh, compared to uh, straight time, additional employees. We have a formula to work the same way. And when you got to X amount of hours of overtime in any, any given time, any given week, and it continued over six weeks, then it was time to start thinking about hiring a new employee. But I think it's important part of our clearly is things that we do is we prepare a extremely, uh, comprehensive overtime, uh, analysis every year. And we've done it every year since I've been there, even though we weren't fully certified. So to me, the big question is where are we spending our overtime dollars? Well, in twenty-twenty, three, nine hundred and seventy-seven hours was for shift coverage. That was the, the number one, uh, thing that we had for. Four hundred and eighty-three hours were spent in court. And I, I, I we always try to be transparent. A lot of that has to do with the state's attorney's policy on witnesses. So some, some years they're okay with you also taking a phone call and responding in thirty, forty-five minutes. Some years they go, no, you have to be here. We just don't know. But I've had a spike uh, in twenty-nineteen's in court overtime to twelve hundred and sixty-nine hours. And that was because they would not put anybody in a call. So we were spending a time on, if you could sit there just in case they needed. Uh, but we're, we're happy to share these, our use of force analysis, anything that you guys want to look at that we do through collectively.
Um, I just want to point out with one thing with the overtime, I did reduce the overtime to a hundred and forty thousand. And part of that was because that one off, second officer at the hospital. And I looked at what was the, um, overtime rate for the hospital after that, um, officer worked there and it dropped considerably. So I did then an average of what percentage was the overtime for the other three years. Took the hospital drop in consideration and reduced that overtime considerably because of that officer there that they now don't have to pay for the overtime. Now bear in mind, the officers at the hospital, that amount that we get from the hospital is in our budget as revenue to offset that amount.
And, and Karina is right because we had ten there, they were paying forty hours of overtime a week to supplement the coverage of Jimmy. So and, and although the nurses tell us they, they've been pushing to have the officers come back, that'll just be offsetting revenue. So to me, it's, it's, uh, kind of, uh, yeah, offsetting revenues.
So the, the COVID years, when we had officers out, a lot of overtime, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, part of twenty-twenty-two. You, you talk about the overtime, what did the overtime look like prior to COVID? Look at, continue to see FY nineteen.
I can't, my computer won't let me go.
So.
As soon as I leave my office, I can't get to anything.
I, I have the analysis.
Why we don't worry.
I got here in twenty thirteen, but we go back to twenty twelve. In twenty twelve, we had sixteen officers and, uh, we had four thousand five hundred and eighty-seven hours of overtime. The trend line, as you can see, has been going down. Now, it's, you see back up, you see the spike. Most of that spike is from the hospital overtime. And when we were forty hours a week, that's a lot of overtime. But our trend line is going down. A lot of that is, as you've had staff, your overtime hours go down, uh. Lieutenant Bagley, uh, does an excellent job at managing this the best of the day. But you know, and again, when we look at where we're spending our money, uh, it's late calls and later rests is four hundred and sixty-two hours. Special assignments is five hundred and sixty-two hours. Uh, community events is two hundred and fifteen hours. So and you can see how these things have overflowed revenue, like I said, we're happy to share. One thing I want to like, one point, I I appreciate everything that Karina has done. She has worked so hard and I sat down, we had a chat last week and I understood her position when she talked about balancing the budget and the memo that she prepared. Only thing I wanted to do tonight was be heard. In the past, it's worked out when I've come to the council and went the hotel motel, it's taken my time. It's taken my officers out of neighborhoods and out of the retail. The hospital, when I came and said, I think we have a, a solution to this because it's taken officers out of neighborhoods and out of the retail area. So looking at this, looking at the numbers from around the state, uh, that are, these are agencies that have been involved in, in photo enforcement for a long time. We took the most concern, or I took the most conservative numbers I could find on half the number of cameras that we are going to have. And that's what I brought to the council. I appreciate everything Councilman Trow. We want to have a transparent program. But when the number one complaint I have is in the plate, it is speeding. I got to find a way to address it. Uh, I got to find a way to answer all these neighborhood complaints. And our patrol guys do what they can do when they're not running calls for service. But on any given time, we, we have neighborhoods that are just, can you run radar here? If it puts a trailer up and the fuel is good for a day or two, people realize they're not getting a ticket from the trailer. So, but it, it does a good job of helping us, uh, capture. And then the other side with the detective, I, I just look at the call complexity that we're asking our people to investigate and you know, first five, six years here, we didn't have a car jacking. We didn't have a lot of the things that were now all seen on a more routine basis. So to me, it's a customer service thing as well. It's a workable thing. But I appreciate that we come here and speak tonight, saying what the, I think we can do to move forward with the, the agency and uh, Brian will just add a little bit each year. So we're ready for what's coming and there's a lot coming. But we're seeing the crime trends out of the north that just keep maybe the road is down.
Big issue is projected income. Getting a handle on that. All right. We have somewhat of a handle. You seem to indicate for what Pine Grove is. The tax can give you a figure. Not a big figure at this point in time, but a figure.
It's, again, I'm estimating, I'm assuming that these building permits are going to turn into a use and occupancy permit and we're going to get the tax, real property tax based on that.
You made a comment earlier, maybe they, by selling, they're going to sell, they're going to sell fast. Right now with the market is in real estate, things go fast. In fact, we have the capability today to say, coming soon. You can put it out there for two weeks, coming soon. So the day it actually hits the market, I mean, you've got a flood of people at that point in time bidding on those properties as such. We're doing a reassessment, tax assessment type thing this year. It's usually phased in over three years. A rough estimate is how much has property appreciated in the last three years? Fifteen percent is very low, I think, at this point in time. So if you were able to use your figures, throw in a fifteen percent, do five percent per year, as an example.
Cap for real, for, um, uh, residential, we're capped at seven percent.
Right. But the thing is that, that if you did it five percent, that's even lower than that. Just use five percent per year. What does that give you on figures as such? Now the commercial, whatever it increases to be, is it a hundred percent at that point in time? That's the way it works, uh, such rental products. I'm not sure how many rentals we have around here, but any increase in that is a hundred percent as well. So it's not locked in, oh, seven percent. It's a hundred percent at that point in time.
Yeah, I, I did, when I talked to, um, the county, I asked if they could give me some type of forecast for that. And they said they would not be able to give me anything until September or October.
And that's prior logic. But I, I think the basically thing is, are we optimistic or are we pessimistic? And I like to be on the optimistic side of the touch. We, we've got to cover, we've got a, a fail-safe point of the fund balance. Don't want to use it, but it's there if we have to have it. And then we've started looking at now twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six budgets. So those where you're, you're looking at really heavy things, where you want these things, they can easily probably fall in there at that point in time. Once we get a handle of what our income is and that's, but there's so much in flux right now this year to get a good hold of what is our income going to be. So my feeling is, one, I don't want to raise taxes. Two, we have the fund balance. Do we, are we optimistic about it and use it as a fall safe back, backfill? Two, we have the fund balance. Do we, are we optimistic about it and use it as a fall safe back, backfill necessary? And beat what we can do. If you think you can get by two, then you should be able to find enough for two. I think we were hung up on that, uh, corporal sergeant type thing. That's only what a twenty thousand dollar increase probably looking at. Yeah, I know your numbers. I know on the books and bookkeeping, it's not, it's your numbers there. Somehow or another, we could slide it to the side.
I don't, I try to make, I take what each department says, this is what we anticipate the expenses for. Then I'm trying to forepass the revenues.
Right.
And then I look at, well, okay, this is our revenues, these are expenses. Oh, we were originally like one point two million. So then I went back and looked, what, what can I justify to be covered under fund balance? And that's why I came out. I can change where, like the reserves, their fund balance, they're just being moved to another fund balance. I think it's really up to the council, how, how protective are you of these residents, um, tax money? That say, okay, well, are you comfortable? Say, we do come, um, the revenues don't come in as high and, or we decide, okay, let's say we're going to fund those positions. Is the council comfortable using an additional two hundred, three hundred thousand or already using three hundred and seventy six thousand, seventy eight thousand to cover already expenses that are operating but not reoccurring operating expenses? And then the other thing, I just want to answer your question, benefits to salary. The benefits are forty one point two seven percent of the salary average.
So your question, are we comfortable such?
It, it's your choice. I mean, these are, these are, this is the revenue. This is our projected expenses. Our revenues are looking like they.
The revenue is projected as well.
Everything is projected.
Right.
But it's based on history and it's based on what do we know now that we're comfortable to increase real property tax. Well, I was comfortable taking all the building permits that they submitted as of the end of February to add into there. So it's really, if we have a shortfall, is the council comfortable to use fund balance to cover those operating costs?
I'm more comfortable using fund balance and I am raising taxes right now, right now, this year.
It's fund balance. If we, if so, if we were to use the money out of fund balance, how do you get that money back?
Uh, when, um, expenses are less than revenues.
At the end of a fiscal year.
Or they don't use it and it goes back to fund balance. Chief, with the evidence custodian, just thinking outside the box, um, here, could you not use, and I'm going to use Brooks because I know he's, he's around, a retired officer that may want to put in hours and do you need it full time or could it be something that it is? And, and I don't know, I don't know the extent of work, but someone that, uh, it doesn't have to be a sworn officer.
No, it doesn't need to be sworn officer. It was a civilian position. We'd be happy to start off with somebody part time and have the position row. If you've ever been to our evidence room, you know that we haven't had a time to do a lot of purging, so there's going to be a lot that goes on, but that can just spread out over time. I'm open to anything. Like I said, I just came tonight for some, uh, a theory and, uh, if it's accepted, it's great. It's not, I understand that as well.
But I do like thinking outside of the box on certain things. I do think maybe, um, as I said, check, checking with Alpass. They really want, they, they, um, want to be part of the community, but um, I'm not in favor of raising taxes for sure, especially since we're raising for, you know, a certain dollar amount.
Oh, I, I understand. I just put it out there as, and it's something that can be looked at if you want to. Um, actually, I've heard the documents saying that it was going to stay the same because I assumed it was, but I didn't want to. I want to make sure that we were looking at as many options as we could.
Oh, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
That's wheeling as it is with the enterprise fund.
Absolutely.
Uh, when you're talking about the speed enforcement, traffic cameras, and this work for you guys, um, this is something new to our community. So it's getting to fall back on you guys now.
Yeah, well, and with Waze too. Waze will warn everybody, at least everyone's me coming.
Not used to it and now all of a sudden here you got.
Saying the sheriff does, as he communicates, the speed cameras are located at these intersections, which is required, right?
It's required by law. And every, you put them, you have to do a thirty day warning period before you can start issuing citations.
So if you put one, wherever, just right here and you've got a ton of people going through, uh, for the first thirty days, you can't issue tickets?
We can't. It's very specific where we can put them. Maybe within a half a mile of the school zone. Uh, we've done our studies. We know that, uh, out near AMS, uh, we, we, I can't say the number of violations, but it was shocking, the number of violations per hour. And then when you get up to the other way, bike race Luther, uh, and then overall radio station road by the high school. You know, there, there, there are safety programs. Uh, Michelle's right, you know, it's nude. It is very well governed by legislation.
So they wouldn't get a ticket for those thirty days or would they get a ticket and it's just a warning?
Yeah, it would just be a warning. There's no fee. It comes in and maybe you would open and read it.
Okay, okay.
We show when you finish. Um, just there's two, and the additional traffic enforcement, we start that as well. I mean, there's going to be things that you guys are going to hear that you, you're using this to make, to earn revenue. People don't see it as safety issues, so.
We get a statement with our PIO, we can get a statement.
And this is purple for me. I'll be upfront, uh, I'm, I'm all, all in favor of speeding enforcement. Cause I've almost been hit and the front of the house is hit. And I see it every day when I walk. And the Fed's just released a report that the traffic fatalities are up like ten, fourteen percent from the previous year. And so for me, and pardon my blunt, this is a carnage that we need to have play a part in stopping. Cause we're running over people, we're killing people because they don't pay attention and they don't drive. And for me, the only way you do that, you gotta change their behavior. When you do that by tickets and I and I'll find, I've got to find that there was a report done by Ten Dye two or three years ago that documented that it's not, that when you put up traffic cameras, it's speed enforcement, safety improves and accidents go down. Because people always want to say, well, you just want to raise money. But I don't, I mean, some communities do. I don't think that's your intent. And so my intent would be to stop this killing.
Or or you want a traffic officer that would enforce speeds. I don't anticipate us moving anywhere away from the twenty five, seventy five percent ratio that we have. Uh, in the neighborhoods, they use a lot of discretion. Uh, the great thing about what we're able to do in Maryland is if you got stopped last week in Kings Grant speeding and the officer stops you or another officer stops you, it pops right up on the computer that the individual got a warning last week. So you're able to go up and go, hey, you got a warning last week, whatever. Uh, I don't anticipate those ratios changing. I just having the visibility out there and having somebody making those stops when, hey, you were speeding, here's your warning. I mean, if you're going twenty over and you get a citation and you get your citation. But I, I understand where Michelle's coming from because new things and people just, it was never that way before. As we grow, traffic safety is public safety.
The numbers are there.
And, and as I see the legalization in Maryland, I, we look at what's going on in the states where that has occurred. Traffic fatalities are dramatically increasing. So they want, they want to call me up, that's fine.
We'll direct their calls to Ward four, is that right?
So Brian, what is our next step? So I've heard.
I think we go back and crunch this, the, you know, the information we've received from you, the feedback we've received from you in the first meeting in May, we can, uh, sit back around the table and of course communicate those numbers to you prior. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So we can do, you can do a what if announced.
But, and I think that there were other suggestions pulled out there that maybe be creative on finding ways to, uh, get funding.
And I think also to remember the fallback of, you know, we may be able to very well fund a few of these positions within our, you know, our July one financial plan, but then, you know, if we still look at revenues mid-year.
Revenue is a key issue at this.
See how some of these programs are doing, where, yeah, the traffic cameras, we could blow, you know, we could end up with twice our assumption. And maybe we consider at that time whether we do add some of these additional positions and, you know, we're trying to hit a move. It's very, you know, we're in, I don't want to say word flux, but you know, we're in sort of a, uh, I always call it growing pains, you know, because we do have new homes that are going to be coming online, uh, a lot of new homes potentially, uh, which is going to add revenue, which also people living in those homes in Maryland, the personal property or the, uh, income tax, shared income tax revenue that will also start to capture. Uh, you know, those, those are additional monies that we potentially could be capturing.
I did read the report for the income tax. They are not expecting it to be as much of an increase as it was in the previous year. They don't expect it to increase. I think the, they're expecting a four percent increase.
Four percent.
That's, um, the other thing I wanted to mention, um, is regarding salaries. The only thing I have in there is a COLA, which is a two point nine nine percent. There is no merit in these salary numbers. I was going to ask about that.
Well, we knew we would be here, but we did a study.
The sixty fifth percentile.
I mean, if you look at what was, um, budgeted for just salaries and benefits compared to FY twenty two, you guys budgeted twenty five point seven percent more, um, than in previous and this year it's being budgeted eleven point seven percent increase.
The sixty fifth percentiles.
I think we shared.
Yeah.
The points.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are you guys looking at trying to fit two of the PD positions into this budget?
I think that if you crunch the numbers and come back to us, that, that's.
We can build scenarios.
Yeah.
Take that other position out that eliminates that. So it's really not, the five positions is really four. Uh, when we remove the corporal position.
So are we looking at adding two, three or four?
No, no, I'm saying.
I think the chief has buttons. He's looking at it. Yeah, and one of these Karina and I talked about was last year, in part of Governor Hogan's refund, the police, police aid to law enforcement went up dramatically. I don't know, I, I've called folks and I thought we'd know and I haven't heard.
Yeah.
It's going to remain high. And I, I wouldn't recommend it because that was part of a special program to kind of keep it well. I, I, I just want, I appreciate Karina and I appreciate the way you can have these candid conversations and, uh, it is what it is. We understand that, but it's, I think it's our job as departments to come here and advocate for what we need and maybe provide a possible solution or two.
Let me go back this much. When you were looking at your projections such, you had a property tax income that you know you had this year. How did you project that to the next year? Or did you take the same figure?
Well, so they gave us an assessment amount, um, and I assume that you guys were going to keep the, um, tax constant. So it increased by a hundred, I want to say eight thousand if we kept the, um, rate at thirty two cents per one hundred thousand, because if we kept the yield the same, the rate would decrease. So I did that and then I added in the ninety two homes, assuming, um, that we were going to get that and that's how I got my, um, amount for property taxes, um, compared to, so FY twenty three's budget was four million, seven hundred and sixty eight thousand and I'm budgeting four million, eight hundred and ninety two thousand.
Okay. Based upon the assessed value that you have right now.
Plus the ninety two homes.
Plus the ninety.
Yes.
So you really have not taken, excuse me, into account as of yet, the, uh, that's what the word I'm looking for. I can't think of the damn word, appreciation. That's taking place on our existing homes within the town.
Well, that wouldn't affect this budget. It would be in the next budget.
Right. And I don't think, but, but my point is there's going to be more income coming in because of appreciation. What's a good figure? I threw out there five percent, which I think is a reasonable figure, five percent per year.
So when we work on the next year's budget, I would have that information.
And we were shocked during the last reassessment because I think ours only.
Yeah, I know, twenty five, but you can project that. I know you're trying to balance twenty four, but if you use fund balance, you can get it back the following years. That's my point. You can use it temporarily and get it back to following years. I know you can think if finagle ways of saying, well, this is legal, we can do it this way.
I mean, if there's, it's not illegal to use fund balance. It's not a best practice, but this is your option. Say, okay, we do come under, we know that we might have tried to get these positions in and the speed cameras may or may not come in. We don't know, but is the council fine saying, if it does not come in, you're okay with using fund balance to cover those positions?
How many new positions do we have budgeted for FY twenty five?
Because we, we haven't even worked, we haven't even done FY twenty.
Yeah, we haven't projected out from the study. We haven't, yeah, we haven't started plugging those in yet.
Do we know how many we could, we said that we would have because of you saying.
Yeah, but then there's also void of the, right, right. And that's still void of revenue. It's just, you know, what we needed, what that study showed was what's I guess comparable, comparable localities of our size and complexity, right? Are what their staffing levels are and what we need to do to get to, uh, to those levels. So, you know, we could go in and do a, you know, we could do a plan for.
Have positions that we were going to put in FY twenty five. So right now, we need to figure out how to manage the positions we budgeted for FY twenty four because those positions in FY twenty four will also be a part of the budget in FY twenty five. So it's no, it's not the thing is, you know, we're going to have that money that we can put towards it because that's got to cover something else.
Okay, well, as clear as mud, um, but I guess we're going to have to come back and, and, uh, we've got, uh, Mr. Manuel, who will give you direction to work together and see.
What's the next meeting, May ninth?
Yes, two weeks.
Well.
Martha's been asleep for ten.
I've not been asleep. I'm actively paying attention. And I would be happy to fill in in Karina's absence if needed.
Oh, but we can't see your face to see if you really mean that.
Well, I am in my pajamas, so I will be honest.
We'll work it out.
Yeah.
We'll bring something back so that we have a.
I say, we, we meet, we meet on the second Tuesday of the month, but we can also get communications out once those numbers are established, so you guys can provide us feedback individually.
So really, I'm looking at how are we going to fit at least two of the PD positions in?
Yes.
And which positions need to be removed that he's not going to backfill? Because I think there's.
Well, he the position, I think we need to look at the position count, even though a position may not be backfilled. It's still, we're still six positions more than, so I guess we can kind of look at more detail on what exactly what positions are going to be filled, but there's still six more positions.
He would need to, the chief would need to close that position, say it's off the books, never to be resurrected again, until the next council.
Till FY twenty five. Yeah.
Yeah, so. Right now, I'm going to see what are the two most important positions that the chief needs and work with him to try to forecast that speed of revenue, speed camera revenue to get those positions in the budget.
Yeah, and that, and it would be interesting to find out, not that I want you to do any other work, um, chief, but you gave us those numbers. What was the percentage of not paid? So if they had.
Department can tell us the average percentage. That's not, yeah. Just the, the victim was using, uh, probably does thirty different agencies photo enforcement in Maryland, so they can UFC. They, and I think it's real good because they can probably tell us, because they do Charles family as well. So I would think our numbers would be very similar in non-payment to Charles.
Okay, good. All right.
One of the things I was going to point out to council that I didn't say in my report was that we are painting currently Rosewick Tower. So you'll see up there that they are painting Rosewick.
Part of the utility services.
Yes.
Agreement that council.
Did they, are you just painting it the blue again?
I was thinking of a nice fuchsia.
The, the, the water tank, the water tower? Nothing like we discussed? No, give me that look. I can see.
You didn't finish.
I can, I can see.
Yeah.
Well, I don't even think we're done yet. We haven't even started. We're only done on one memo. We haven't looked at the budget worksheet, honey.
Well, I don't even think we're done yet. We haven't even started. We're only done on one memo. We haven't looked at the budget worksheet, honey. Buckle up. Doing blue again? We have such a great opportunity. We'll discuss. All right. Okay, uh, I know we all did. All right, some of us are on vacation. We pulled up from here. All right, what do we have? Um, we're, we're on the budget worksheet now, correct? We've been on the budget worksheet. We've only done that one memo. So all these, each budget tab, each tab is for each department. These are what they're requesting, um. For their department. Okay. So if you want to start with legislation, we start with them and actually. Zero going on. Where's my total? So on the sheet, there is a, um. Total. Shows request and then proposed. Is that what we're looking at S and T? Well, no, you're looking at the proposed. The request was, what I was trying to do is make sure that my numbers were there. And then I had the, um, department numbers. Okay. Because what I might have forecasted may not have been accurate for what they need, um. So the proposed is what you're looking at. These are what each department is proposing for their budget. Okay, so we're on, um, legislative. Yeah, and, um, so legislation they're proposing, um. Needing four hundred and fifty three thousand, which is a twenty percent increase, um. Part of that is for some office equipment, um, part of it is for computer equipment. See what else, oops, um, is the increase in the salaries and, um. I mean, you guys can see all that. Is that funding, that is funding a, the, the town clerk, yes.
She's already in the budget.
Yes. Okay. Uh, well, the equipment I'm having come out of fund balance. Okay, it's, if it's blue, it's a capital. If it's purple, it's ARPA. If it's pink, no, if it's purple, it's my one time operating expense. If it's pink, it's ARPA. And blue is fun. Yeah, blue would be fund balance.
I have a question about twenty percent increase and the opportunity to take that.
Well, is Kelly here?
Which, uh, which line item were you looking at?
The last split of tabs is overall.
You're talking about just the entire budget, twenty percent.
You tried to explain the, the equipment and some other stuff.
Yeah, so there are some, sometimes there's notes like there's two tablets, but some of these like, um, what's in colored? It's coming out of fund balance, not coming out of operating cost. If it's not colored, it's coming out of operating cost. Or operate, yeah, it's an, it's going to be offsetting their operating revenue. So what is the percentage of increase that is operating versus the fund balance? Or the one time, the, the pink is ARPA, so that wouldn't really count because that's. A one, and the blue is, um, fund balance that, and then the pink is one time. So what is the operating expense that will continue? What is the percentage on that?
What was maybe colorblind, so I just had to confirm.
I wouldn't really say it's pink. I would say peach, but that's okay.
Yeah, I see.
I was speaking segment.
Yeah, okay.
Just say we're working that, uh, legislative does cover a lot of miscellaneous items, so. Portion here in the council chambers will, times will get further into legislative. Uh, the MML asked the registration for that hotel or like applicable legislative as well. So you want to fund your own projects, same.
Yeah, but you look at the percentage increase and like the office equipment was a nineteen hundred percent increase, you know, it's only ten thousand dollars though.
And that, that wouldn't matter.
No, it's.
It's a seventeen percent increase for the.
Versus twenty.
Yeah. All right, any questions, council on legislative? We've got the seventeen percent increase. Kelly's here and same.
Can stuff be spurred and, and, or, or want to make any difference?
Well. The, um. So we, we can't do the salaries unless the person you hire as the town clerk doesn't want, gets a single fan, plan instead of a family plan. Those type of things can affect the budget because that's a huge difference between those plans and I budget for the family plan because. Worst case, don't. Yeah. Good. Um, let's see.
Before you know, make a big difference in your whole.
I mean. No, the things just went up.
Okay.
Here and there, I mean. There's some increase in some registrations. There's some increase in attorney fees. Um, there are increases in the salaries, so.
You know, one big one was the NHT, the Maryland's trust grant needs to be completed. Um, would that be in here in your legislation or your community, uh, budget? Sorry.
Because your, um, registration did go up three thousand dollars.
I think you're right.
Um, attorney fees went up to two thousand, um. Do. Those are just their estimates. Yeah, well, some of the registration, um, I like to have people, okay, we know we're like, I know I'm going to do the GFOA. So I know it's pretty much exactly what it is. So I have that exact number in. I know it's going to be built for myself and Martha, so I'm going to time. So I, my mind is very specific on, okay, how many conferences am I going to? Well, I know I want to do the GFOA. That's five hundred, so Martha's. But it's coming out of legislation. No, I'm just giving what I do. Okay. So when I sit with some of the, some of the, um, department directors, I'll, um. If they can give me the, um, actual amounts. I add those up instead of trying to estimate it, but they know exactly what it is and that number is exact in the budget for the expenses. All right, so seventeen percent overall increase, but that is probably the cost of doing business. There's no. Yeah, no fat on that. Everyone else good with that? All right, I guess we're going on. Okay. Which one next? Okay, the next one, there's no elections, correct? So administration, that's Brett's budget. Okay, and how much of a percentage did that go up? That went up eleven percent.
It was all the shows.
That's a, I, I was thinking it was Michelle, but. Oh, sorry, oh, my mic on. All right. That.
That's something that was considered, but not.
All right, any questions on?
That there is a twenty thousand dollar increase in the town manager's vehicle due to the cost increases on vehicles that we've experienced. It went from thirty five to fifty five, so if you want to cut that, that would be easy.
Balance, that doesn't help them.
I'm just trying to throw my bone, Karina.
Yeah, just trying to see if we're on our game. It is colored blue, so it is fund balance.
I can drive a smart car.
There you go. All right, and, I mean, and there's nothing that's glaring, uh, in my opinion. Does anybody else see anything?
I mean, we're seeing across departments are just going up.
Yep.
Like this inflation.
The nine hundred percent in, uh, increase for hospitality. You know, that they may say it's five o'clock somewhere, but they really don't mean that.
It's going to be a good year.
Yeah, it is. The cost of doing business is going up. All right, any questions on this one? All right, moving on. Finance next. What is the increase in finance? Finance is pretty high, let's see, oh, thirteen percent. Yes, there are, but that, those were in the last budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were, um, part of it is, um. My computer is giving me a lot of problems.
You better ready to run out of battery.
No, I got plenty of battery. You just. It's, it's not. Okay, you threw a new color in there. Karina, you, you threw yellow in there. Um, yellow, it's under, um, the projected. That's probably because I, um. Overrid the formula to make it more accurate on the projected, but I'm trying, my computer is. My screens aren't gray.
Karina, you want my computer? I got your thing, if you're welcome, please.
Thanks. Uh, so it looks like tuition reimbursement was a big one. Yes. Coming out of, it's a one time. So yeah, tuition reimbursement went up. We have the IT costs, that's, um, a bit higher. Um, but that's going to be covered from ARPA in this fund or this time, or this year. Um, the auditing services went up, um. There's the ARPA consultant, um, but again, that's ARPA. So really it's the auditing services, our IT services and the, um, education that went up, um. I actually, yeah, those are. All right, any questions? All right, moving on. Legal, we, there really isn't any budget here because we budget those based on the department. So there's no budget there. HR, um, of course, I don't think that's going up much. Let's see what they are doing. Well, this is the first time we've had it dedicated. It went down too. A- and part of that salary, the salary wasn't as high, um, so, and, um, also some of the, um. Employee appreciation stuff is actually in the administration budget now and not in the HR budget. So what was the decrease? Um, the decrease, probably the employee appreciation. I mean, the percentage. One percent. One percent. Yeah, and it was in hospital, hospitality or. We'll take it. We'll take it. Planning. That, that. No, the formula, um, is broken and I didn't want to overwrite it. So it, it's because of rounding. That's what it is. It's because of rounding. But if you go to the, um. Summary, the totals page, it will tell you for each department what the variance is in each department. Okay. Um, so planning is an increase of point seven percent. Point seven percent. All right. Um, that does include some capital in here. Um, oh, there's.
Your software.
Yeah, there's, um, for your, um, vision plan, you guys have grants and donations. I put that under the one time expense, so I'm taking that from fund balance if you guys end up doing it. Um, there's the ninety thousand that actually should be blue, um, for the, um. Study that, um, Councilman Jenkins requested, but that again would be coming out of fund balance being a one time thing if you guys do it. Um. See what else went up.
Yeah, we looked at doing, with the potential of doing that in-house and we're determined it was not possible for us to do that in-house, so that's sort of an estimated.
There's software costs, but that's for Immunity City, um, and again, that would be capital. Being that it's, um, IT one time. Okay.
So there's really no. Can talk about revenue project, so there's no forecasting of increased permit fee because of the.
Well. I actually, what I did is I looked at what we previously did and I increased. I actually put in for permit fee.
Yeah, because we've had a year to basically look at that.
I put the permit fees, let's see, I increased the permit fees from, so it was budgeted one thirty five last year. I'm putting it at one fifty three, one ninety.
And then the position in the planner too, is that the equivalent of like a senior planner?
I have it in there as a senior planner.
That was previously budgeted.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, so this budget reflects every hire of a senior planner, yeah. All right, IT? Um, see. Thirty eight percent decrease? Yes, and that is because there's a decrease of a hundred and twenty four thousand and something. Let's see, what was that? Computer, um, hardware. Okay. So.
It's a cloud base difference.
Yeah, that's what. I mean, we haven't spent much, apparently there was a hundred and thirty six thousand budgeted, but we've only spent eighteen hundred. See, this is good news. All right, let's, let's. Yeah, but it wouldn't have a figure. I like thirty eight.
But we're still where we're at.
So right, if it locks up on IT, it means it's time for us to go. All right. All right, um, general services. Um. See what happened with general services. Um, that is estimated going up fifteen percent and it looks like there's an increase in. Construction services and that is more. Makes sense. I don't have enough for it, so it must have been something we calculate based on the, our current. Yeah, it's based on our current forecast where we're at. We, we budgeted fifty thousand, but we're. As of, um, end of February, we're at fifty four thousand, so we anticipated to be eighty one, so we budgeted at ninety, so that's what's increasing it. Okay. Um. The PD, would you like to talk about your budget?
You can have it left on.
Yeah, you can have his left on that. Remember, purple is ARPA, blue is capital. What is the increase? Purple. Twelve and a half percent? Okay, and that, is that with the, um, new bodies? That would, that would include everything he asked for, yes, yes. Yeah. So that, that will change if we are going in and doing two, so that's within.
Most of it's just the price of everything, as you guys know, it's just.
Oh, yeah, between the fuel, the cost of vehicles and all of that. Yeah, and those vehicles and the, um, radios and everything, all of those are being fun, out of fund balance. Yeah. So.
So if we, you know, exchange emails with Karina with this, but as, as we look at it. Cut down the number of officers who will, you have to go into fund balance. We'll cut one of the cars because we're not going to have to need for one of them. If we don't hire all these officers, so if we have to go into fund balance, the price of that car would not be coming out, it could help cover the price of an officer if we have to.
That makes sense.
So what's a car usually cost? About fifty, sixty thousand?
We just did it on state bid. I want to say the Dodge is, do you remember thirty?
Thirty six?
That was. I think it's like thirty six, but you're talking about. The equipment, we, we did not be really equipped with the radio, all that sort of stuff, so probably comes in about the sixty thousand dollars.
All right, any questions? All right, inspections.
Back to you.
Thanks. So inspections is separate from planning.
Yes. It's part of public safety, um, so let's see. Inspections.
Love the little voice back.
Part of that is a vehicle, they're getting a vehicle, that's forty-two thousand. But again, that's fun balance. There's the increases in the fees for inspections, but we do have an offsetting revenue to cover that, and they pretty much offset. There's not, other than those two things, those are the real big increases there.
Well, I think working, it's been working out with their new inspector in there too, you know, getting some help. Sorry, we had to see, they had to steal Mitchell, he's doing a really good job.
Um, emergency management, I mean, there's not really much of an increase we're bringing over for the other equipment regarding the sirens, but again. If we do that, it would be out of fun balance, so there's really no increase, there's no increase, a hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay, and what percentage is that?
It's showing zero.
Okay. Look.
Because it's so small.
All right, I like that, I like more of those.
All right, did you want to talk about your public works?
You've got the computer.
Well, I can let you share.
I just would be happy to answer any questions, I, you know, I think we went very conservative this year. Uh, honestly, we didn't add any positions that weren't funded in last year, we felt like that this would be a real interesting. Uh, year with projections of recession. And to be honest, I was here during two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen, and we watched assessments go down. We were just trying to be. You know, we we had a lot of people increased last year. Green, I can't look at how the, what the actual increases or decreases are, so I couldn't.
Little voice.
Admin minus one point, or minus one percent.
Minus one percent.
And I would say some of that is because we transferred more to the admin over to. Um. We we did transfer more of the admin to the enterprise funds.
Yeah, the enterprise funds administration cost was eight hundred and some thousand, and it went to a million, so enterprise funds are covering a higher.
Was one of our.
Yeah.
It's an accurate reflection of your operation, that's justified.
Yeah.
It's just weird. Covers part of rent, it covers rent of Karina, it covers me, it covers, you know, all of the different pieces.
Billing, AP, it takes a percentage of those because we process, the billing's one hundred percent because it's all utilities. AP is, I believe, fifty percent because they process up the. The enterprise and general fund invoices. I think cash sharing is seventy-five percent because most of the payments come in are for utility payments, so.
Are you comfortable? Some of your staffing. If you're not asking for it, that's perfect, but I'm.
Well, we we still haven't even filled some of the positions, we're working on that and we've been trying to get to that point. But, you know, when you lose people and then you try and go back to the hiring, we have an offer out now for an inspector position. Um, we're still trying to fill that position, we have a GIS position that we're still trying to fill. We have some different public works positions that we're trying to fill, but it's been difficult because we just haven't gotten the applicants in. We're working on it, and, you know, we're we're still. The the real challenge, and it's no different, I sat in superintendent's training for water and wastewater today with superintendents all over the. All over the state, and everybody's facing the same challenge, you're looking to. Uh, you've got a declining pool, I mean, the state will come out and say you've got a declining pool of people. Uh, of licensed personnel and everybody's fighting over the same, it's the same challenge with the police. You know, with a lot of the, one of the big challenges we've been having is with a lot of the problems with Flint, Michigan, and. The state's actively pursuing quite a few superintendents now. Um, with criminal and civil processes, we're facing the same problem with the police. You know, if if there's no protection anymore, um, there's one superintendent in the state who's facing twenty years in prison. Or falls upon records. It's one of the real challenges that, you know, we, I saw it all along, that's why I have Maryland Environmental Service doing all of our testing. Because I've got, you know, the fox watching the head house, you know, I'm not having the situation where anybody questions what we're doing because I have the state doing it for me. So there are a lot of challenges with this, I think, you know, overall for the public works budget, you can look at the numbers, Mayor, you have the.
I do, and and it looks like, so for for admin, we just said it was. Uh, one percent decrease, and then you have the facility operations, it's negative twenty-two point eight, so twenty-two and point eight percent. Decrease, the fleet maintenance is seven point one increase, and that is cost of doing business. Streets is twenty-two point three percent decrease. Parks, seven point one, I would think that's an increase, I would think that's equipment and gasoline and.
Projects in there, and some of them are actually ARPA funded. Um, and there's.
Community promotions is a decrease.
There's site improvement, wait, ARPA's pink, I gotta, I shouldn't use pink and purple. Well, I like both the colors, so I forget which one I use. No, I don't see anything for ARPA, I see, uh, we have a project for a hundred and twenty-five thousand for playgrounds, which has an offsetting grant if we receive it, and then there's. Ten thousand for, I believe it's mulch.
Yes.
Um, which I put under the one time operating expense.
That's for the sponge surface, Michelle.
Yes.
That we.
For numerous tiny businesses.
So the good news is, when all is said and done, it's actually a decrease of one point three percent for. Um, all of the departments accumulated from the FY twenty-three budget to the proposed FY twenty-four budget.
So there is, I believe, a decrease total, yes, but there is not a. Operating expense decrease, the operating expense is actually up nine point nine percent. The decrease is due to ARPA funds because we had three million dollars in projects for ARPA. Well, we only have one point seven, one, one million seven hundred and sixty-nine, also with the capital projects. That decreased as well, but our operating increased. One, one million. And at nine point nine percent, where our operating revenues, I think it's not including the opera, not including. Fun balance to cover those one time costs, everything, so our expenses or our revenues. Um, only increased five point one percent.
And our capital projects, if they all don't go, which a lot of them, we've kicked down the the can down the road on that, that is. I see that's an increase, I mean.
Yeah, but it comes from capital projects or coming from our reserves or fun balance.
All right, questions, council? I mean, I think that you have tried to squeeze as much out of, you know, it as you can, and and I don't, in my opinion, I'm not seeing any. Any windfall there, anyone saying this is our opportunity to try to cash in and try to get as much, I I think that you have been. You've done a very good job with each department trying to get to the bare minimum. For what we can do to operate.
Departments coming in saying, this is what we need and trying to work with what we.
Yes, absolutely. All right.
And back to my growing pains.
Yeah.
A lot of homes are being built, there's a lot of revenue that we hope to capture and, you know, we get to. January one, we may have a better hold of what we can project out for the rest of the fiscal year, so there may be a time where we can reevaluate. In early January and see if there's other items that we may want to push forward more in the personnel arena. I will, I will say, just from the development standpoint, and I'm out there every single day looking in, you know, and and working with each one of them. It is right now, we have a very large number of apartments that are coming in, so we do have a large number. Because we're, you know, we'll be starting construction on that eight hundred and ninety-two. Uh, unit development just north of Rosewood Road here, beginning around July. Parkings has already started, the one hundred and sixty-eight, maybe. No, departments, Rosewood.
Oh, I thought it was two thirty-two.
That's on the. I think how we should.
Yeah.
So that's coming, uh, the thirty-four, as you know, are under construction down here, but. Uh, that are being constructed along nine Charles Street, so there's. There's quite a large number of apartment units coming into play. Fairly quickly, and it'll depend on what happens, like the ones out in AgroCopia. Um, whether they start moving on one of those at any time in the near future, because there are two apartment buildings, so it's be built out there as part of the final phase of AgroCopia. The, the others, it is interesting to me. Horton right now is. Um, moving a lot of houses, but I personally attribute that to the. Uh, special taxing district, because the special taxing district, where they take sixty-five million dollars. Worth of funding that they get out of the special taxing district, and they relieve that from the price of the house because the residents will be paying that back as a tax. Um, it allows them to sell a comparable home at about twenty thousand dollars cheaper than any one in the surrounding area, so. It does appear for some reason, because the other developments that I see, like Steeplechase, AgroCopia. All of those are not moving houses right now, they're, they they have slowed down greatly. Whereas Horton is still moving houses, so I think really the only thing that I can see personally that is attributable there is that they're. Being able to slightly underprice the market, and it's really because people don't. Uh, understand, you know, people get their buy house, they don't know what their property tax is before they buy it, but they really don't understand the concept of. Special, the special taxing district, and so it is, I think, allowing them to. Be able to do a little bit better marketing job. But I will say, looking out there and trying to, you know, judge when I ask about, because I ask every one of them about, you know, where they're selling, how many are they selling. It does appear that most of them have really. Falling off the plateau a little bit.
Is Horton providing special financing for the purchasers?
I think they're buying down ten thousand at closing.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're also the shiny new penny.
Yeah. Fred always talks about rooftops, and and I I understand that. One of the, the, he's one of Bobby's words, talk about challenge, you know. If we're able to work out, and I know that's a if, to hire two officers or add two additional officers. If we hire a new one, I can find an academy by August or September, those folks won't be online for up to a year. So we're always behind, and 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 we get it, it's part of what goes on. Uh, that's why we jumped on Mr. Estogi with this, he's got a really good background, so. Uh, that helped us, and then the council was kind enough to let us bring on that other body to get him into the Enron County Police Academy, but. I know from sitting and talking to Karina, she squeezed everything she put out of it, and that's why, uh, to to get to where we were budget-wise. Uh, as a department head, I appreciate that. But I, I, you know, I think sometimes one of our silos, I see what I need as as we see this growth coming in, and, uh, uh, I want to make sure that. What planning doesn't get a reputation of having crime, because that's not going to do anything for housing values, so you have that balance, and if you're walking in tightrope.
Of choice.
All right.
One of the other things I did get, did you? Did you see the, uh, the email I sent you?
Yes.
Lenar actually came to back to us today and wants to. Complete the water line through the parklands over to the park. Where that had been held up, but apparently they've had an internal meeting, and so Lenar is apparently coming back with some additional housing. If they want to move forward now with the connection through to us, so that would be a very interesting piece now to. Move that, that means that if we do that, the water line would be all the way through to Laurel Springs. And then we could go ahead and make the connection from Laurel Springs there to Tillman, so it would really mean that the. The water line could go in. Very quickly, the only challenge then becomes just the agreement.
And would it be a positive impact to the town of Plata, or would it be a negative impact on our water appropriation?
Depends on the agreement.
Right.
Okay, well.
I'm being perfectly honest, as long as, as long as the. You know, that you know that I have held a very hard line position on them, because I can, I don't, you know, I, my thing is, is that. I've said we shouldn't have a. A higher percentage of WSSC water than what the county does.
Right.
We all get free water out of the ground, and wouldn't we like to have a hundred percent of our water? And, you know, wouldn't the county like to have ninety-nine percent of theirs while the town or the plate, they force them to buy it all from WSSC? And that's been, that's been the stickling for, I mean, honestly. But I think we both know, and and, you know, listening to everybody earlier, that, listen, if. If we were able to come up with a long-term solution to that, and they have an agreement there. It certainly allows for the council then to think about what, how they want to. Really, whether they want to expand or what, it doesn't. Hold water over their heads, that there's a decision on that, and it's, you know, we're, we're, we're moving on the other things, we're moving on sewer. Um, those expansions are underway, we're, we're moving ahead.
And I think they had the public heard about.
They rescheduled one.
Yeah, they was, that was timed. They amended the national plan and that's basis of central.
All right, looking for direction.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, after reviewing the other budget sheets, I don't think much has changed, we're still.
So I think the only thing I'm going to look at is work with the chief and try to get a reasonable production on his speed camera revenue to fit those other two positions in.
So we can move forward. If this works out and not increase taxes on that.
We're going to look at the revenue stream he has potentially with the speed cameras and the two. Just keeping two positions in and scratching four of them for the time being, or deferring four of them.
Okay.
Yes.
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 A dedicated person to fire lanes and.
All right. And then I can adjourn this meeting if there's no other questions, is that correct?
You're the mayor, you're.
Any other questions?
But I greatly appreciate it.
Uh, me too, all right, thank you very, very much, everyone, I moved to adjourn this meeting at nine twenty-nine PM, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you all for a very, uh, very robust conversation on this, and and Karina for all the hard work that you've done on that, and and the department institute, so greatly appreciated.
Here's the figures I was looking at, she has them here already.